Okay, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible and every and just.
Jason, push it just a little. The light isn't on, so.
What am I doing?
Just push that button again, maybe.
I can see that is this side.
Okay, you see the light in the front, I can't see the red light on it.
It's videoing, you guys.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Jason.
Alrighty.
Mister, um, that is not here. Mister Bruno?
Here.
Mister Hamel?
Here.
Mister Fackto?
Here.
Mister Randall?
Here. All board members have been provided with a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. A motion will be entertained, approved, and accepted minutes of the regular monthly meeting of January twenty-four, twenty-three, providing that there are no additions, deletions, or corrections. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Fackto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. Alright, address these. Todd, you were on tonight, right?
Yup.
So, uh, my weather will try to make it fairly quick, but I won't. I'm here to five minutes, but go ahead, buddy. Let's, uh, try it. Sure.
Cool. So, some updates from the last work session of things that have been completed. Uh, the homepage, we've added events, uh, in on the homepage to provide more content for the homepage. We've taken some things down off the homepage that are old and were expired, like the New York State utility form. That link for New York State didn't even go there anymore because they, they ended the program for the year. So, one of the things going forward is that we want to have the content so that it expires, so that there's a time when it's on the homepage and then it goes off. In order to do that, we basically want to try to keep that homepage full of content, full of something. So, we've added, like I said, the events in, so the, the next three events, um, will show up in, in the, uh, on the homepage. So, we programmed in the three actual regular meetings. Have some slight concern about my idea behind that, which is the next three events could also be work sessions, but they're not guaranteed. So, I'm not sure if we want to limit to what events, what next three events come up on the homepage. Um, there's also featured resources. So, the things that we've tagged on the homepage for featured resources as of right now, they get tagged, so we can have an unlimited amount, I recommend at least three. But we can have an unlimited amount of tagged resources. I put up there the comprehensive plan, the budget, and also a youth sports guide from the Clinton County website. So, those are actually tagged to the homepage at the bottom. Also, another thing that was added, and whether or not we want to continue with it, uh, will be the determination of, of all of you, and also Kevin for input, is we added the ability to have a picture with your articles that are on the homepage, as well as just pictures with articles. And the homepage now shows a picture, if one exists, if one has been attached to the article, a picture will show up. Otherwise, if there is an attachment, like a PDF, the PDF will show up. A preview of the actual picture of the PDF will show up. So, like for tonight's work session, you can actually start seeing where it says the agenda, and you can start browsing through, and people can click print and print right from there. If a picture or, uh, an attachment is on one article, the picture takes priority and the picture will show. If there are none of the above, then there, of course, will be no links and there will be no previews, no pictures. So, that's an adjustment that happened. The, the caveat there, and whether or not we will continue with that, is determined by, uh, the pictures are perfectly fine, but for, um, any kind of article that has an attachment, like a PDF, if you view it on mobile, it'll actually not show the preview. It gives you a button where you click open and it will come up immediately. So, whether or not we want to have that, where, you know, because it shows that button that says open, that'll be up to, uh, you guys, but I, I activated the feature, it looks very nice. Um, full screen, the content, no matter what, is very full. I, I think it's very manageable, like, meaning that there will always be some good content on the homepage. So, that was pretty good going forward. Uh, the other big changes, uh, since the work session were departments pages. So, we've added content on the department's pages, as well as fixed the, uh, the situation where the documents that are categorized underneath a department weren't showing. So, now, underneath public record, if there's like the rec department, or like the codes and zoning, if it's underneath public record and, and listed there, it will also now show up underneath their department page. So, like right now in codes and zoning, you can see the links for building permit and the, um, comprehensive plan. And for rec department, all of the, the, the youth handbook, the parents handbook, as well as the soccer, the T-ball, and the liability waiver are all showing up underneath the rec pages. Uh, department page. So, there's still content to be added. There's, um, some new requests that came in to both Rachel and myself. So, there's definitely some more work to be done. Um, some more offerings for like the rec department, uh, for upcoming programs. We are still, uh, working through updating the forms and, and gathering that content. And for total transparency, things left to do. Uh, at last regular meeting, there was a request to offer links, like links to like the county landfill. Um, Donna, I believe you were, you brought that one up. So, it was an excellent idea, and we built a system around it to be able to do those. We are still in final phases of testing. The, the only thing that we are testing right now is the exact thing that we have referenced for, uh, documents is categorization. So, in other words, if we list the link underneath the town clerk, then it shows up on the town's clerk's page, and it shows up underneath links for the town clerk. So, that functionality is the last piece of that to be tested. Um, the other thing that's left to do is articles specific to departments. So, one of the things that we had brought up at the last meeting was the ability to have like a newsletter and to basically build out or self-generate a newsletter and send it off to people in town. One of the phases in doing that, but also just for the look and, and design of the town's department pages, is having the articles that get attached with multiple categories show up in the multiple areas that they've been attached to. So, in other words, when, say Kevin gives me a supervisor message, uh, an article to post up as a supervisor, it would show up underneath his page, as well as the main articles, the news for the site. And then if we want it featured, it would be featured on the homepage. So, that would be getting attached to three categories. Right now, we only have featured, fully functional. We want to add the ability to add it to multiple categories, where it could be added to the town board, it could be added to multiple places, it would just show up, that one article would show up anywhere you want it to be. So, that is still being worked on. And last but not least, the online signup, the last feature that we are testing, is alerting. So, the, uh, notifications and monitoring and alerting that people can sign up for, we are in the final stages, stages of testing that before we activate that feature. Um, some of the handouts that I have given out tonight was a, uh, new website contract for you guys to review. Um, by all means, it's, it's just for reference. There's very little changes, there was one minor change on the first page of it, where domain names listed. There was a, a subdomain called app.kylarfallsny.com, that's no longer necessary. If you have privileges to log into the site to make adjustments, you can just do that from the regular login link, and it routes you appropriately. So, that was just taken off. The other updates there was that, uh, instead of being at, uh, Homestead, we are moving it as of March, so as of tomorrow, it will be going through Namecheap, which, again, is, that was approved back in January, at the end of January. But it was premature, we don't want to do it until we're within a ninety day window of the expiration of the other one. So, we'll be doing that in the month, month of March. So, we just updated the language there, that's saying that that's where that goes through. Underneath encryption, uh, still, still the same encryption certificate, still the same provider. The only difference is, is it's a renewal instead of a purchase. We, the old website didn't have it, the new website does, so we just need to, uh, renew the certificate. On the site design, nothing much has changed there. The, the only thing that's changed throughout this entire thing is the hourly rate is a hundred dollars across the board, instead of being a hundred dollars for design, and then a, a lower amount for maintenance and a lower amount for virtual, virtual training. So, one of the requests was that, um, one of the happenings is that there's liability, and with that liability, uh, we wanted to make sure that anything we do for the town has coverage for the town for the liability, so that was added in there as well. Commitment, the one major, uh, adjustment that I felt was very important to add to the contract was a service level agreement. Uh, the service level agreement was so that any, any situation where data needs to get posted the day of, uh, like, like some content or some, some posting needs to come out the day that it's required to be posted, as long as it's provided to us within four hours, we agree that we will make every effort to have that up that same day. So, that's an adjustment from last time, which, actually, I think the old language is still in here, about a twenty-four hour notice if at all possible, yes, underneath maintenance, provider of an update being made less than twenty-four hours, there's no guarantee. We updated it to the service level agreement of if it's, if it's required to the town to have it up the day that it's been decided or given, we will make every effort within four hours. So, hopefully that provides a little added benefit and security. That, uh, that hasn't been a problem this year. Um, in fact, we've been well in advance, so that's, that's awesome. If that continues, then that clause doesn't even come into play. Uh, same, the rest of the contract is, is the same. So, security is still through third-party vendors, GlobalSign being the SSL provider, PayPal, or Braintree Payments, um, being for any credit card processing, but we're not doing any of that yet on the website. And, uh, that is it as far as the contract is concerned for changes. I also provided a supplemental piece of material for budgeting, I did this last year. There's been little, very little changes, but basically on this supplemental piece, it explains that domain registration is twenty-five dollars a year. SSL certificate is a hundred and seventy-nine dollars a year, that is up from a hundred and fifty-nine last year. Uh, hosting yearly is unchanged from last year, that is nine hundred dollars. There's also a summary of what that includes. And so, a total cost to have the website is eleven hundred and four dollars a year. I, uh, suggest a budget of somewhere around thirty-five hundred dollars, which will leave about twenty-four hundred, just shy of twenty-four hundred dollars for any kind of labor, maintenance, training, so on and so forth, uh, which is about twenty-four hours of, of service. I think in a state where the website is, design is, is stable, we're not looking to add new features, new functionality, we're not looking to adjust things, that twenty-four hours is more than reasonable enough amount of time, uh, to, to be, do all the postings for the year. If there's any design work that needs to be done, any added functionality or features to the website, then that budget may not be accurate, or if there's any plugins, if we, if you guys want to do accepting of payments online or something like that, that obviously will change this budgeting factor as well. That's all the content I have for tonight.
Okay, so, when I was on there earlier, the youth, when I clicked on the youth soccer, it gives you that four oh four again, message for some reason, I don't know why, but it's giving you an error, four oh four. I did it several times. Um, deputy supervisor is actually Sherm Hamel, not.
Yes, yes, he, I did, was made aware of that just before.
And was it by design that the bowling flyer shows up on every one of those departments?
No, that was taken down, that was caught already and taken down.
Yeah, I'm gonna quick sure why that was showing up there.
When we, that, that happened because when we did the previews, the bowling flyer did not get categorized. So, anything that doesn't have a specific category was, was going on all department pages. So, or any, any place where, uh, a article could be, there would be, it would be there, because there was no category. So, we, we fixed that today, which is just taking out the requirement to have, it's gotta have a category in order to be shown, so.
So, moving forward, if we did a, a contract with you at a hundred bucks an hour, like saying, there's gotta be some big hours left on the historian side of things?
Yes.
So, that would all be at a hundred bucks an hour, no matter what, you're doing that now? Because you're saying that the website design is completed.
Oh, no, I, I could, uh, that, that's a good point. No, I'm definitely well within my ability to say that we could finish up any of the current ongoing items, and we can put a listing together in the next thirty days of what those are, and that will be done at the lesser seventy-five dollars an hour. Uh, just to let you know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm willing to work with you no matter what on that one. The, the hundred, the design work has been a hundred dollars even in last year's contract. But Northeastern Computer has always billed the town out at seventy-five dollars for the last year for the design work, and that's because when we signed the contract, the labor rate for our company was still seventy-five an hour. So, I'm willing to honor the seventy-five an hour for any remaining content that you see fit, that we get a list together. Um, but just to let you know, the contract was always a hundred dollars an hour for design work, so.
Uh, Patrick, when I came in and looked at the vouchers tonight, I didn't see any with your name.
I haven't submitted a bill this month, so. As soon as I submit a bill, I, it's, uh, the terms are net thirty, so for next month, we should.
If I, if I could, uh, so, at this point, we are at a hundred percent, or are you still building?
I, I don't feel, I don't feel that it's, it's a hundred percent, meaning like there's things I still want to see. Uh, but that's also with the fact that there's, there's still content being delivered, there's some new requests that were made. Um, I think it's important to realize that there's, the, the website project as a whole is never a hundred percent completed, right? It's a living document, it's going to continue to grow, it's going to continue to change. It, at this point, I, I put the town, the town of Skylar Falls' website above many others in the area as far as what it has. I, I still like to see some changes, I still like to see more content, like articles underneath each department. I would like to see the newsletter be put out there. Um, I don't have that content yet to be able to put that together and sample it, try it. We can always strike it if we don't like it, you know, like if, if, if a newsletter doesn't work. But that hasn't, we haven't been able to get fully there to actually try the newsletter, for instance. I would like to still see that, so I don't consider it myself a hundred percent.
I think that was a, a good answer. Uh, Sam, are you a hundred percent with what, what you're seeing on the website at this point with forms?
Yeah.
Okay, and I, and so I, I guess that's what I'm saying is, if we could get to a point, and I don't, I agree that, uh, there's going to become a point where you're going to want to, okay, now I'm going to start charging. So, when we get to that point, uh, whether it's a month from now or whatever, um, I'd just like to see us get to that point where we can all agree, we're there, okay. Anything from this point on is billable?
Agreed.
You good? Do you agree with that? Good?
It's still billable, it's going to be billable at seventy-five, you said, rather than.
Except for that, right.
Right.
Yup. I think, I think actually you're referring to the, the monthly hosting.
Yeah.
Yes. So, as suggested, the hosting will not go into effect until, like, again, you know, same, unless there's a rule, I, I don't know town rules, but if there's a rule to have a contract signed now that the current one's expired, then by all means, we can make a, an amendment and say, do not be charged until we all agree. But I'm honored, honoring that, yeah, there'll be no hosting charge until we agree that.
My own honesty, and I've been honest with you from the beginning. Um, I'd like to see it on a monthly basis till we're all satisfied with it, rather than saying something that's for a whole year. Um, I, I have reached out to a couple ones, like, you know. Um, and cost factor wise, I believe before we enter into a new contract, I want to see two other ones, so we have three comparables. Um, which is pretty much a standard in the industry. So, um, if you're willing to stay on that, uh, month by month right now, and we can work out those final things. Again, it's not my decision, it's the full board decision, what they want to do. But, uh, that's where I'd like to keep it, my own personal bias, is month by month right now. Again, I will be getting two other estimates to compare this one to the other two. I'll bring everything back for the next work session. And then hopefully, all the rest of the items that we talked about are pretty much addressed. I know you're waiting on some content from me, uh, two or three items.
Yup.
Like I told you, it was, it was kind of crazy last week.
Flashpad, Water District, and your supervisor message.
Yeah, yeah, there's a few things.
Patrick? Go on, go on.
Sure, to answer part of your question, the only thing that I know is my baseball, softball registration ends April nineteenth, and I've got people calling me going, how do I sign up? And they're calling me now even though it's snowing, so, you know, if they can't get it done, you know, that makes us look terrible.
Is the baseball up there? I thought it was.
It's up there.
The art.
It's changes to it, but it's up there.
So, what, is that something that, um, we've discussed?
Yeah, I, I spoke to Rachel today to try to straighten some of that stuff out, and, uh, you know, but I don't, I still not sure how all this is going to work, you know?
I noticed the form still wasn't addable today, because I tried to do that too, and get on there and punch in.
That is a hundred percent.
It does print, so they'd have to scan it and then send it back in, or drop it off down here, but, uh.
People don't want to do that these days.
Huh?
People don't want to do that these days.
No, I agree with you, that's why I've been asking for it to be added.
I think, I think my biggest concern is, at this point, if we can get Sam up and running a hundred percent, then we know we're on, we're well on our way. His, his programs are probably, as far as I'm concerned, right now, as far as he's forums, signing up for baseball, softball, whatever, uh, are probably the most important forums right now. Howard, coming down the road with, uh, building permits and everything else is probably second. You know, we, we gotta get one thing fixed first, and if I was to pick one thing right now to get, get running a hundred percent, let's get Sam up and running, if you can get him up and running, then the rest is, is probably going to be a lot easier. Right, Sam?
Well, I really, more important than, than, for truly is some of, some of those things that are required for the grant and stuff, I just want to make sure that those things are up there.
Yeah, the, the CBD grant is up there, has been up there, you know?
Yeah, but like I said, there was several forums that I gave you, like their housing officer forum, AD compliant forum, all those ones. You, you can show me where they are on there, because I haven't seen them. And those things are all required as part of our grant, and, uh.
I, I'm, I'm going to go along with Kevin a hundred percent on that, but if we can't get Sam up and running a hundred percent, all this rest is, is way harder than, than Sam's forms.
Right, understood. So, there, there is an update, the, the forums and the fillable, the, the ability to fill, yeah, the fill, yeah.
I call it editable, but the, the fillable forms, yes.
Um, so, they were created with Adobe to, to be fillable. There is, in, in our industry, we call them features, maybe a bug, maybe it's something where, uh, if, if, if Adobe is not installed on a system, then that editab- editability does not show up. We are working through that, because there's, there's been some changes in some, some default structure around that. But I think, Rachel called me prior to this meeting and informed me exactly what Sam just said, is the form way, basically, it sounds like we don't want to do the old-fashioned form way, we want to just do fully online. So, we're going to make every effort, um, I, I can't put an exact ETA, but we'll make every effort to make that the priority, just to make it fully online, not worry about forums and printing and, and any of that. I, I, I don't know what your take is on that, um, do we still want to have printed forms available?
I would.
Sure. You gotta, because there's a lot of people that don't have computers.
Yeah. Are they?
Yeah, definitely gotta have that.
You gotta have, you gotta have both, because we'll have people that won't even pick the computer up. And they want to come see Sam, hey, I need a form, I want to get my kid signed up, okay?
So, the, the form is printable, we're working on the, the digital fillability of it, but we'll put an, we'll make an also a hundred percent online option. So, that, no form is.
I know I'll have at least one of those other options available for the, the next work, uh, work session. Um, until we get the, the third one, by then, then we'll have all three to look at, and like I said, um, I'll work with you, because in essence, uh, you know, we just got about a half hour, I guess. Um, I'll work with you to get you what you feel you need left. And I'll make a couple little notes like I just did the last two meetings. Uh, here's what I, I don't see, here's what I see that's not working, or whatever. And, uh, I can report that back to the rest of the board as.
Anyone, does anyone like the site, or is there anything that people don't like about the site?
I'll tell you this, it's, it's, it's a hundred percent better, it's thousand percent better than what it was, okay? That doesn't mean that it's a hundred percent yet, in my eye, okay? Um, and it's been going on for a year now, as we just stated. So, um, I will say, over the last month and a half, two months, um, it's really been a marathon to get this to where it is. I would have liked to seen that earlier, okay? Um, that way, our constituents would have had what they should have had early from the beginning, and we wouldn't have had all the animosity with everything going on. Uh, so, you've been very responsive to everything I've asked of you lately. Um, the only reservations I have is that it took putting your feet to the fire to the end of this contract to get it there, okay? So, I'm just being dead honest with you. Um, I, I believe you've made leaps and bounds from where you were, and I did look at the site. There's still a couple four oh fours popping up, like I said, that, you know, you're saying you're working on that. Um, and there's some information on some of the, uh, site that you can't click on, and those are going nowhere yet. So, I know that's some of your content that you said you, you need to work on to do that. Um, I know that Barb, a couple different times, has given you stuff for the historian stuff, and that I know is going to take you, because she's got a lot, a while to put it on there.
I, I guess I don't understand in some sense, so if you get something that's camera ready, if you will, like a PDF or something, isn't that just jam it in? It's.
Pretty, pretty much, yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, because she confused me, I had to go ask her, I said, all right, we got these, and you got four of them, two of them are like the same, and she goes, oh, no, with the PDF, and what'd you call the other one?
Just a doc.
Uh, just in a doc, because she wasn't, what way you sent? That's where I'm illiterate with some of this stuff. I sent all four of them to you the way it was.
But anyway.
Howard, what's up?
Quick question on the Adobe.
Do do fillable forms, do we have to have that Adobe on our computers, or is it on the website only that's gotta be done?
So, so that's, that's the thing right now, is that the fillable, the, the editability of the form. Is only showing the fields if you have Adobe installed. It, it's not a requirement that we want, so we're, we're working to not have that.
So, you won't need it on your computer after your doc?
That's the plan, you shouldn't want to, I mean, like, cause phones and stuff, they have built-in PDF viewers. You sho- you, you shouldn't have to have that, and so we're trying to. It's, it's something new that is a new issue that we haven't had in the past.
Because most of my forms are Word, and I'm able to enable editing and go through it and, on my computer. I mean, it asks me if I wanna install Adobe, and I always say no.
No, right.
Now, one thing I do have, cause I feel a little jipped for the town clerk site. Um, freedom of information. Forms, uh, handicap permit forms, cause Rachel and I talked about all those forms that should be there. That, for the people to be able to fill out, and we still have an issue with the emails where. I did get a couple of new emails, but I cannot delete any of them, it says the operation process is already deleted.
That is, that is correct, that issue is a, an IT related issue. That we can definitely help with, but we need certain permissions. So, I've been working with Kevin, and talking to him about that. Um, but, so that, like, if we install it on your phone, you don't have that issue on the phones. Um, Kevin's got it on his phone, can delete. Um, Howard here is using the email, and he's using an old version of Outlook. That doesn't have that issue, and so his is working perfectly fine, and. My, best of my knowledge, right?
From the website?
So. So, i- it's definitely understood. Um, the, I actually did scan in the FOIL request form today. Uh, but what we're, what we would like to do is, um. I think Sheila, did, did you do the last update to that document, or was it?
I think I just got it from the computer.
Okay, it looks like the FOIL request form was a homemade document from the town. Uh, yeah, so, so we scanned it in, and we have an image of it, but we, of course, would like it so that it's digital and editable. And not just a photocopy, but I actually did do that myself today.
Alright.
How much were their, as your questions are?
Um, I'd rather not put him on a hot tea anymore than he's already been right now. Um, and when we get to public forum, if he's still there. Okay, just. Yeah, alright, so, communications, petitions. Thank you.
Yep.
Point ordered, did you, did you?
Probably did.
Yes, we did, yes.
I was sleeping.
No, it was, uh, Vern. Yeah, I'm sure I'm with a second. Alright, um. First communications, I got this. Clinton County Soil and Water Conservation Department. Uh, the Clinton County Soil and Water Conservation District is again offering free mosquito dunks in an effort to. Uh, fight the breeding of mosquitoes. Dunks are some tab, or excuse me, small tablets comprised of an environmentally safe. Uh, larva side that specifically targets and eliminates mosquito larvae. When placed into standing water for about thirty to forty-five days. Examples of standing water, uh, favored by mosquitoes include bird baskets, plantar basins, uh, stagnant pools, and water troughs. Uh, one of the most environmentally friendly and effective ways to help protect the mosquito-borne diseases. Is by, um, utilizing mosquito dunks. To use a dunker, it's simply, uh, easy, you just take it out of the pack and basically put it in the water source. Um, I have a few of these leftover from last year, they're willing to give us some more for free. Um, I took the liberty of saying, yeah, we'd want them to hand out, those are to hand out to anybody in the town. Um, so, we'll hopefully get those shortly. Uh, when we do, I'll let everybody know, I'll put it, that's the only thing we'll put on the website. Additional. Uh, charter communication, this letter will serve as a notice on a round, on or around March first. Twenty twenty-three Spectrum, Northeast LLC Spectrum will launch Stellar TV in high definition on SPP. Select channel one seventy-eight, uh, or channel two oh one. On a channel lineup, lineup serving your community, there's some more here, but anybody that uses them for carrier, we're gonna get that same message. Um, Clinton County Treasurer's Office, um. They had higher than expected, uh, sales tax revenues this year. Um, please find and closed a check in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. The original twenty, twenty-two tax, sales tax projection that was applied to the town of Skyler Falls. Uh, property tax bill was eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. The actual received was one million, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. Therefore, an additional one hundred and ninety-one, um, thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-four cents is due to the town. Uh, if you gotta have a, an estate, that's a good one. So, um, like I said, we almost got two hundred thousand, uh, extra revenue. A lot of that's contributed to the internet, making of computers. Uh, all those sales that used to be done in stores, a lot of them are happening online, so if they order from the computer in the town. Kinda gets sales tax. Um, another little windfall. Um, it was built into the last contract that it, we signed with, uh. Clinton County, that if the fuel costs exceeded, um, the one eighty-five ninety-six. That they were at the time, that there would be, uh, additional monies between different price levels of what the fuel was. Basically, the first one was fifty-five percent, fifty, uh, increase of fifty-five cents, then two additional twenty-fives. Uh, total increases, uh, per mile, because the fuel cost was a hundred, uh, excuse me, a dollar five per mile. So, basically, we just got another check from Clinton County for the, uh, extra cost of the fuel. Uh, with, uh, Mike's, uh, contract to take care of the county roads for fifty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So, that was one of the things that we negotiated in this town. Cause there were towns that were thinking they weren't gonna do it anymore, cause it was costing them more money than what they were. Uh, getting paid when the fuel costs went up, so, it was a two good.
Can I ask, quick, quick question, so that, that money goes into the highway fund?
Yeah.
And the other money, uh, the sales tax goes into general fund?
That will go into the general, yeah. So that concludes, uh, the communications petition, monthly reports. So, has everybody got a chance to look at the monthly reports, if so, can I get a motion to file?
Yes.
Thank you, Reggie. Sorry, didn't know that was gonna happen for a minute, second by.
Sherm.
Sherm. Okay.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes.
Uh, receipts, uh, tax collector, one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Uh, town clerk, four hundred and twenty-five dollars, Macy Lane Water, one twenty-six, twenty-three. Marsenville Water, two thousand, nine oh eight, forty-one, Woods Mills Water, one thousand, one eighty-eight, ninety-two. Uh, Justice Barber, one thousand, twenty-four dollars, Justice Van Artwick, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Cash receipts, uh, the one. Hundred ninety-one thousand, one fifty-one, thirty-four, like we just talked about from, uh, the treasurer. Uh, county treasurer, and then the fifty-six thousand, three thirty-seven from, uh, the fuel reimbursement. Uh, quill refund of two hundred and sixty dollars and eight cents. And charter communications franchise, uh, fourth quarter fees, seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents.
What question?
Yep.
What is a quill refund? What is that?
It just said we must have overpaid something.
It was, it was a, it was a, um, balance on it, of overpaying.
Oh, okay.
So, can we get a motion, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Alright, can we get a motion on that one? My Vern?
Second.
Sherm? Hold on.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. Uh, minutes of the planning board dated one, three, and twenty-three. Get a motion to file?
Yes.
By Mister, maybe Facto, uh, second?
Yes.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. Um, there was no zoning board minutes, department reports. So, would be, uh, counseling?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, How- Howard, have you started using your, do you have a contact phone number?
Not yet.
Not yet, when do you anticipate getting one? Got any idea?
What's that?
For the cell phone for Howard?
Well, like the rest of us right now, unless he wants to use his mo- his own.
Yeah, I, I hated to, I had a call on Howard, I hated to give your number out, I didn't know what to do.
Right, usually what I do is.
Just the office numbers you only contact him?
They have a, his, his email is up and working now. And we fixed his phone, so he can get his messages, there was a. He didn't have the PIN to, to get the new message, so that's been reset, and that issue's been resolved. So, I do have, during my time tonight, I did have an update on, uh, Spectrum for, uh, tents up. So, we'll get to that, but right now, um, like I said, it must be utilized his own, I wanted it out there. Um, which I don't blame for not, but, uh, what I usually do, and I get several calls a, a week, is I get their name and number. Then I will call him on his phone, so he can get a call back.
Okay, so eventually we'll have them.
Uh, yep, as long as the board wants to still go through with that, yeah. I got that information in here.
Okay, uh, obviously, I was absent from the work session. And, uh, Sherm, I talked to Sherm about it a little bit. And I'd like to bring up the Rixon Avenue situation, again. Now, we had talked, when we talked before. It was mentioned we may apply for a, a different loan, which, EPA loan you had told me, Sherm?
Yep.
And that was expected to be in this fall, possibly, the results of it. Are we still gonna proceed down in that situation?
You're talking about your emergent contaminants.
Yes.
But, uh, no, that isn't even out yet, or open yet, so.
Okay.
Basically, as long as. My understanding of, of most of these grants, as long as the construction period is still going on. And you receive the grant money, are you allowed to receive the grant money, if you were to get grant money? But, you don't wanna hold a project up, waiting for something that you may or may not get. So, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, I would move forward with the project and move forward with, uh, emerging contaminants grant. Under WEA, uh, soon as that comes up. And that could be June.
Okay, and the only other sort of an issue I have, Kevin, with it, I appreciate all your work on that as well. Um, I reviewed the Macy Lane project, and their plans. And their requirements for when they go to bid. And all the information that a prospective bidder would need to put down. And there was like, almost a hundred pages of documents, where the bidder on a project has gotta complete. And I guess, because it's ARPA. We've already approved Macy Lane, and it's ARPA funding, the ma- majority of it.
Thirty thousand of their capital.
Yes, right, so, how would it differ, seeing that that contractor has got to. Do all of this work, fill all these forms out during the bidding process. And we could possibly allow a contractor to go in on Rixon Avenue and do it without doing that. If re- if required, that's all, that's the only point I have on it.
There'll be.
That's all.
Right, there's certain criteria that are s- are put into all bidding. By federal and state law. There, there is no bid for that project if a contractor decides to do it for free. There's no cost, there's no bid. So, the legalities of, like you're saying. Minority-owned business, or family.
Right, Kevin, right.
Those I can check on to make sure that there's.
Yeah.
I, I don't think there is, from what I've checked already, because there's, there's no money taking, changing hands. So, uh, minority of women owned business, if they wanna go ahead and do it for free.
So, in reality.
They can do it for free.
We're developing a bartering system.
It's not, we're developing, we're using, we're utilizing it, but it's already there. And, and if you look even, uh, like when you went to New York City for the training, there was a whole class just on that, that they wanna see that.
I, I did, I do realize that.
Public relationship.
What I'm saying, and certainly, if it works out, good.
Yep.
But, what I'm saying is that this particular contractor, there, there would be no bidding on Rixon Avenue.
There will be.
Well.
For the materials.
Oh, right, but I'm talking about a major.
All of them.
Kevin, for the labor involved, and that labor, the same as Macy Lane, is gonna have to all be scale work. It's, it's right across the board. And I mean, you had emailed me the Macy Lane project, and did you review all the papers? On the bidding process of it?
I have looked over, I didn't read them word for word, because there's a lot there.
Right, there's like a hundred pages.
There's a reason, exactly, and there's a reason why, even like with the garage or any of the other ones. That we hired somebody to go over, review the bids. Organize them into what they believe is the best bid to the worst bid, and then make a recommendation to the town. And even under the bidding process, they make sure that all of those will, nice and thus and there, and will be taken care of.
So, I mean, under the bartering system, might as well call it that, we're swapping material for labor. That contractor probably would be forced to pay his workers scale.
I really can't tell you until we get into the contract, there will have to be a contract that's written and agreed upon.
I'm not trying to confuse it, I'm not at all.
But in order for us to put out to bid for even the seventy-something thousand dollars worth of materials, right?
Right, right, I understand.
Instead of almost two hundred thousand, um, we would definitely wanna have a signed written contract from him saying that he is going to do X, Y, Z. And that way, we can hold him to doing it, and as well as making sure he follows all the engineering.
Well, of course, of course.
That'll be part of it, but we haven't got that far.
Oh, okay, hey, thanks, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Alright. Lucky didn't come into the highway, anything on the water, Donna?
No, no.
Uh, safety and coat?
Um, I did attend New York City, it was a phenomenal training session down there, there was only one that. Was reported as a.
Credited?
No, no, they're all credited, not just more credited than so, but the, uh, just the, the wording of the course itself. Was a little bit misleading, it was more on the standards and, but, other than that, everything that I attended was well worth the, the time. Plus the, uh, one-on-one with the head nutrals from Department of State for the, uh, codes. You know, I had a very good chance to sit down with them and begin classes and everything else, and have a good rapport with them, and. Other than that, everything came back okay, the only other thing I have is, one of the things we have to institute immediately is written complaints. We don't wanna do verbal. If we do take verbal, what was suggested is that the person that takes the verbal, writes it onto the written complaint form. Turn that in, and then I go out and get that signed by the person.
Okay.
If we end up going.
I got, I got what you're saying, a lot of it is phone to me to you. Um, I'll let them know from now on that they will have to fill out a, we do have that, we.
Yes.
We did that. Um, I'll let them know from now on that they will have to fill out a, we do have that. We, we did that form about a year and a half ago.
Yeah, and that's what I was checking with Pat about. I wanna make sure that we have access so that can be filled out online and directly to the office, so.
Yeah. And normally if it's gonna go into a code violation of some type, then most definitely that's considered a proper practice is that they fill it out in a way, it's an affidavit when they go to court.
I have a quick question. Uh, can you take anonymous complaints or do they have to?
We can. Mike might be able to, or Mr. McCormick might be able to answer this better in court as far as if it comes up, where and why were we acting on a complaint? As far as being anonymous compared to somebody signing a form saying, this is happening.
But I guess that's why I was bringing that up. You have to have a form, a signed form with a complaint. Is it signed or is it just signed anonymous?
I, I have people-
Well, by the time you get to court, you gotta, you know, somebody's gotta be sitting on the witness stand, so if, if you as code enforcement officer haven't seen the violation, you got no, you got no claim.
Right, but if he goes out and sees a violation after a complaint, he can forward. It, it adds a lot, a lot more weight.
Yeah.
When you can say, okay, it was X, Y, Z that, that, that way it's not all on your shoulders, although you can go around the town and look.
I, I only bring this up because in the past, uh, whether it be, uh, uh, code enforcement or dog control or whatever, unless somebody's willing to come, fill out a complaint stating who they are and what the complaint is, I was always under the impression that unless you're willing to do that, we're not taking that complaint.
No, it hasn't been that way for me, I'll tell you that, because I've done several.
No, I, I just, you know, you see what I'm saying though, I already-
Yeah, I do.
Most people are very good. I, I will, I'll tell you, I don't wanna speak for what you've taken from phone calls, but you know how many I give you, uh, already. Um, they tend to call me more even him, and he gets it secondhand. So, I get the name, the number, and the addresses, and like I said, most of them are pretty good about it. There's been a couple where they're like, yeah, I don't want my name attached because I don't want my, my neighbor mad at me.
Exactly, and that-
Um, it doesn't, it doesn't, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm not doing his job, but as a town supervisor, if a, if a zoning violation is still exist, when he goes out and looks at it, then he still has authority as a zoning officer to, a code enforcement officer to address it, all right? I would much rather, and I tell them that, I would much rather you go out and form a complaint. That way, if it's something that goes to court because they're not willing to fix the problem, then that, my understanding of using that form was that became an affidavit from them of the complaint. There was no anymore, but that's what I was-
I think they may still have to show up in court.
Yeah, that, that always seemed to be the thing is that they didn't wanna put their name to it because I don't want my neighbor getting pissed at me. Whenever it's, I'm not, I'm not gonna, yeah, but can you look into it?
What, what I would suggest on that, my personal feeling is that if you get that or Reggie gets somebody like that, fill out the form and then just mark it as anonymous. We'll not, we'll not give the name. And then at least we have it documented that this came in, who it came, come in through. Now Reggie's kinda on the, the ball at the same time as myself, you know? Reggie can say, yes, I did get a call. He would not leave his name. I forwarded to-
Okay, and you will still act on it?
Just a related question. If you do issue a citation to someone, do you have to fill out an affidavit as well and serve it on the person?
Or you mail it?
Mail it. You can, you can certify and mail it.
So, you have two of them. You have the form and an affidavit as well?
The complaint is what I would act on, and then my findings would be the affidavit afterwards that I would file.
All right. Uh, congratulations.
Thank you.
For passing all your classes, so they have the ones that you had to have, and for going down there and taking the others. Um, what is that? Back to you.
To me?
To you, county.
Um, I've paid off the town all the taxes. Been very busy, as you can see, the six days. I've collected over a million dollars, but that's only because the mortgages and all that. They wait for the last minute to come in. Also, the town's paid for, paid up in full, and now I'm starting to pay the county.
Okay. I mean, that's a busy time of the year for you.
I do.
Um, planning board, I got nothing, dog control. Turn?
No.
You're happy too tonight? Good. All right, well, it gets to me. Story and it's good. I just wanna thank you for working and, again, working on one hundred and seventy-fifth, uh, anniversary stuff and sort of helping to, uh, get some of the bands lined up. The, most of those from last year that I gave you, I wanna-
Yeah, Phil's PBR has him committed because-
Okay, he's got, I've done worse, but yeah.
And then, um, we, we've still got spaces open, so depending on what we wanna do, so.
I'll get with you and see what we got for openings left, 'cause I know last year they said January and February. Really get a hold of the gym in January if you really want them to be there at any time during summer, so.
On then, then like I said, we still have some spaces, so there might be local, other local people or-
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I've, I've thought about a couple other ones where we could do an open mic night or something, you know, whatever.
Yeah, karaoke. I know, uh, Nick would do that too. And that was a, a good thought too on that website page to, anybody that, we have a contact in, wanting to play, thanks for doing that, 'cause I hadn't thought about doing that advertising on the web that way, so.
Yeah, that's why we need the website.
I think there should be a town board and supervisor carrying for me.
Yeah.
Be right up there.
I don't mind singing at all. I'm, I'm really not that good at it, but I don't mind doing it.
Sure.
Yeah. If you get April up there, yeah, if you get April up there, you'll, you'll never get her to stop. Um- Oh, yeah, you did get us once last year. Okay, just a couple of real quick overviews for the ones that weren't at the, um, last work session. So, our IT company has decided to stop services with the town. That means they're gonna be looking for another one. Um, I'm gonna get with, uh, Mary. We're gonna call her around, see what other towns, um, in our area, who are the towns in our area are using, um, but that, they're gonna be done at the end of March. Okay, so we need, we got about thirty days to figure that one out. Um, as far as Marcella Water, um, we got a couple, a lot. We got a lot of resolutions to do. A lot of them are due, due to the fact that, uh, it's, the things are moving pretty quick right now. So anyways, um, LaBerge needed to redo their contract, uh, due to USD ARD requirements and having it, uh, not to exceed on there. Um, we needed to hire a financial for a band. The band is the intermediate between, uh, the, the loan at the end and for the, uh, grants, all the grants that we got coming in. Uh, the band will take care of, be the bank, so to speak, um, until we get the grant monies, uh, approved and to the town. And then at the end, um, again, that'll go into that one point seven-five low interest loan for up to thirty-eight years. And we did send the paperwork in as a full five point six million. Right now, it's looking like we'll probably need under three. So, we can change that and they'll re-underwrite that, uh, but we're better off to, to keep that as it was approved for the, the full amount until we know exactly what it's gonna be. And I'll keep everybody up to date on that one. But, um, you, one percent is usually what they get. They figured, um, we wouldn't need more than, uh, three million, two point eight to three million that started out with for the first year of the Marcella Water project. And that's why I say it'll be under thirty-eight hundred bucks. Uh, the financial advisor said that he would hold that cost even with a, a cost increase. It's a standard, standard rate right now, yeah, even into twenty-four and a twenty-five, which would be the close of that project. And then he even gave us a, a price ahead on, um, the final conversion and closing of the USD ARD loan and handling that for ourselves. We'll have those resolutions tonight. Um, the other one was Barton Le Judas. I talked to them to rebid that garage floor out again. I brought them up to speed on what we had, uh, got, um, completed last fall. So, there's a section of the front of those floors that was added in the original that won't need to be done now, and aprons on the outside. Um, also spoke to them after we had the last discussion on the oil-water separator. Um, they're also gonna incorporate, uh, pricing there for whatever that may be. So, that's in there, the cost of that.
Can I ask a question when we go back to, as water?
Yeah.
Um, what did we decide about Rixon Avenue as far as sending them? Are we supposed to send them certified letters to see if they're on board? Because I see it says that, uh, go out to bid. Shouldn't, aren't, aren't we gonna go forward with the letters to see if they're-
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There's several things that have to happen up there. There's a couple, um, easement, it's not an easement, what is it?
Right away.
Right away. Or easement, whatever they wanna say it, but there's a couple of rightaways that we gotta do up there. Uh, everybody will be sent a letter up there saying, um, the projected cost. It's all gonna be our freight lines up that area. But, uh, and then willing to, wanna be part of the Marcella Water District because they're gonna have to sign a letter saying that that will be consolidated into the Marcella Water District. Yeah, that Rixon Avenue water as it stands and being built will, upon the completion of the big project, be consolidated in. But I can't, I can't consolidate them in right now because it changes the whole scope of our eight point one million dollar project, and I don't wanna start over again with that one, like I said, until, until that's complete now.
But they will have to make a commitment, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we, we should send, whenever you're ready, certified letters to everybody?
Yeah, as soon as I get, the, the next phase is I gotta show them a set of engineering that's approved by Clinton County. So, right now, the, uh, Rixon Ave has been down there for, gosh, a month and a half, almost two months. I was waiting on, uh, the tromblies to give me where their septics work because they wanna make sure that they're right away in the water line with a, with proper distance. Don't quote me, I think it's thirty feet away from that. Uh, so that's been addressed. Uh, Macy Lane is down there right now. Uh, I just seen a couple back and forth between LaBerge and the county. Uh, they always do that, two, three points of interest and can you change this, or can you clarify that kinda thing? So, uh, they're both down. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't believe that it'd be another couple weeks, maybe three weeks at the most, um, before we get everything approved. Now, once, once that is approved, because those are preliminary engineering plans I got, once those are the final engineering plans, that's when I'll move forward and send everything out to Rixon Avenue and to Macy Lane and let them know this is what we're looking at doing.
And Kevin, just in, on Rixon Avenue, as a jumping point, shouldn't we just have Rixon Avenue surveyed? Because we're working to create a new turnaround over there, or create a turnaround. So, do you think it would push the project ahead a little bit to get a surveyor over to Macy Lane and find out where the property?
Macy or Rix?
Or Re- I'm sorry, Rixon Avenue, and see where Rixon Avenue, where, it's so congested over there.
Yeah.
There's things all over the place, and it, it's really confusing.
Can I just say, based on what Reggie's just saying, you're a hundred percent right. Just looking at that whole project, uh, found out that, uh, at the end of Rixon Avenue, correct? Um, we actually own the property. Uh, Mike's not here tonight. He had asked about doing a turnaround down there, which Reggie's talking about. Come to find out, we actually own the end of Rixon Avenue. Uh, fifty foot right away, both sides, fifty feet in, a hundred and fifty feet in, whatever it is. But anyway, we own the property there, and I agree with Reggie. I think we should get a survey.
We should get a survey. Whoever's got stuff on our property should be getting it moved so we can get these trucks turned around and not responsibility for backing them the whole length of that road.
Unbelievably, that's what we've been doing.
I was over there at that fence. I was looking around over there. There's a whole group of two seventy-five gallon drums there. And Howard, I wanna bring it up to you. And they're just sitting there, and the EWS, that Vermont company that runs that operation over there, are they now permitted to operate? It looked like their permit had expired back in June. And how could they possibly, you weren't in there then at that point, how could you give them another permit? I mean, these two seventy-five gallon drums, I couldn't believe it. They're all tipped over, they're sitting there, and within probably thirty feet is a drilled well for the home, the last home in, I won't mention his name, on the right. There's a drill well right there, and within not very many feet, Howard, there's a group of two seventy-five gallon drums.
Two seventy-five, not fifty-five gallon drum?
No, they're, they're two seventy-five. They're two seventy-five.
Two hundred and seventy-five gallon, two, two hundred and seventy. How do you know the earth waste though? Isn't there a couple of Volkwagens over there?
Their part of their scrapyard over there. I mean, it's all together, they're spat-
I don't know whose stuff it is, but it's all over.
Yeah, so let, why don't we just leave it at this? How about if we authorize Kevin to, let's get that Slend survey.
Sure.
Are you agreeing with that?
And just a point on that survey, you know, if we're need, if we need rights of way for these water lines, we might wanna have that surveyed right into it as well.
At the same time?
Yeah, 'cause we, you know, we have to be able to describe the, the water line somehow.
The tromblies are gonna take their, their trees there on their properties, so it's not a town expense.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we would need one on the end, and if it does close enough to our property where we can run that across, we'll need that investment, but we'll definitely need one for Charlotte's property at the end.
See, and, and I agree with, let's, let's work on this, and I'll, I'll be more than happy to help Kevin with this.
I'd rather have my, my stone chiseled out before I start.
Yeah, 'cause I, I, I don't, I'm not sure that that's earth waste, uh, scrap on, on that property. I don't even know who put that gate up. Who do you think about the gate up?
That's another one. I don't know, yeah, now that we know it's ours.
We don't know that.
But let's, uh, we can do that. We can get a survey, but just give me a little bit more time.
I will volunteer to work with Kevin on that project, on that project. Sound good, Kevin?
'Cause there's, there's, there's gonna be quite a few of us working up there. You're gonna be involved with a few things.
But I gotta know who's property I'm, I'm working on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, no problem.
Well, you know, Howard, the permit is a good, what Reggie mentioned, until June. June comes with the earth waste permits. But in the office, there should be a file with the map that Earth Waste puts in every year to show that they're working in their footprints. Yeah, you're smiling, okay.
No, I, I get them. I get copies of them.
Okay.
I mean, in, in terms of an oil-water-
I usually send them right over to the-
An oil-water separator system, wouldn't they have to have one there? At Earth Waste?
Yeah.
I mean, they just make the vehicles, they-
I don't know, I'm not gonna answer that.
I've never seen a junkyard with one.
If they got a crusher, they usually have a container, but I'm not gonna-
And again, I, I'm just gonna say, we don't know who's that stuff is.
Yeah, true. I, I don't believe you gotta have an oil-water separator to have a scrapyard. No, you don't.
I don't think so.
I, I know of a lot.
Like I say, Reggie, we don't even know who that gate, that's just worked out.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe you can bring it down here for the snowplow.
Work it out.
That's a gonna be a work of progress.
Yeah.
All right, um, so you guys wanted me to check into phones. Mike Snyder is not here tonight. So, we checked with Spectrum. They, they had a couple of issues with a contract with Verizon where they weren't allowed to do certain things that they've agreed upon. Um, so, it's the opening up, opening this up from what I read of this as a small business account rather than a, I wanna say a municipal account, okay? It would allow them to, uh, still orchestrate it. Otherwise, uh, we'll probably go up to, uh, end up going to Verizon to get the phones. Um, I can check with them too. This isn't something we have to bolt on or do tonight. I just wanted to get you guys back the information. Um, so a few, the nuts and the bolts are, is on the second page at the top. So basically, uh, we were looking at ten phones and we may not need ten. We need seven. I don't know what we're gonna do. You know, it all depends on, uh, what the board wants to do. But, uh, monthly cost of the data plans for the ten devices would be two sixty-nine ninety-one per month. Now, remember this is using this package they set up. Uh, they're Galaxy ten phones, okay? Uh, just like there's a, if you look at that first page again, you'll see that there's an iPhone line that you can use. There's, uh, um, what was the other one? Google Pixel, that's a newer one out in the market. And she just sent me, I didn't have time to copy it off before I got in here, but she sent me another one after I left here today. Um, that has a whole listing of different phones. But none of them are gonna be the most modern because they're, uh, government, you know, small business, government contract kinda thing. So, it's not, you're not gonna get a, like I said, you're not, you're not gonna get an iPhone thirteen or fourteen and whatever they're up to. I don't know what they're up to. But, uh, anyways, it, it, uh, total cost of this plan is, like I said, it'd be fifty-five, sixty per month for the device. Um, because there's ten of them at five dollars and fifty-six cents apiece. And then the monthly plan for ten devices is two sixty-nine ninety-one. And then the internet and wifi with seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. So the total co, total cost per month for ten phones would be three hundred and ninety-eight forty-eight. Which, I know I pay more than that a month just for the three phones I got that I'm responsible for, so, um.
Don't we have internet? We have internet through Spectrum right now.
What's that mean?
We have internet through Spectrum right now.
Yeah, but this is for a data plan for the phones.
But we have Spectrum, uh, da, uh, phones and we don't, we have Spectrum internet. We, we just pay a service fee.
I understand that. Like, you have wifi and, and data or internet for the phones. Which would be separate from the computers that we use it on down here. It's, it's a, it's another, another charge on your phone.
It's a difference of Spectrum mobile and Spectrum charter. Spectrum charter is the.
It's the internet and then mobile is your internet. When I wanna get on here and use the internet, it allows me to do it. Through wifi. So that's why the wifi and internet are, are integrated on that. But it's, well, it's just, it's on your phone, but you'll get it on any of them. But it's, it wasn't terrible. If you want, I can check with Verizon too to see what they are. And then we really gotta start narrowing down. I really need a hard number of how many phones that we think we need. So. Work on that on, uh, at the next work session. Um, any, if anybody gets any information and they wanna look into it, any of the board members, go ahead. Cause I got a million things going on. But, uh, again, if you wanna look into it and come back with something else from somebody else, I'll listen to it. I'm sure the whole board will listen to it, but, all right. Okay, this is. Me, I don't know, I don't think we've got that one either, if you wanna get that. Burn matches. I'm gonna have to look at that one too. Uh, Sherm. Right. Think I made, hey, look at that, I made enough coffee. All right, so, I did some digging and I talked to Glenn Carter down at, uh, um, Clinton County, um, planning. And we had appropriated some money this year in the budget for bathrooms, um, out here and down at River Street. I know Reggie had brought this up, uh, a little while ago. Would we be allowed to put a bathroom down there because it was bought back from the county? So, this is basically what the regulations are. And there's gonna be a lot to this. It's like escape that deal. Um, open space and, um, restriction. To be eligible, a project must result in acquisition that meets all of the requirements of forty-four CFR Part eighty and this guidance, uh, governing the use of grant funds and the use of acquired real property, including. So, basically they, I'll skip right down to C. If you look under C and then, uh, number double I there, it says a, a public, public restrooms are one of the few things that, um, you're allowed to do. And say we can do it on our own. That means we gotta contact the state and, and the feds to get this done. This might be a year project to get done. Allowable uses under, um, excuse me, so if we go to page two, allowable uses include, so if you go down one, two, third bullet point, uh, it'll say public restrooms are the only walled and roofed buildings that are allowed. Because everything up above that is, um, allowable for space, land uses is. But they don't want you to have any building that has four walls. Naturally, restrooms and bathrooms need four walls, so that is allowed. Uh, then you go down where I highlighted it, two up. Those are sewer water and power to serve the allowable uses. Sewer water and power line crossings were, where there is no, uh, floodwater obstruction created and there are no other readily available locations for the system. So it looks like we can do the water to feed the thing and the power is already there. Uh, uses generally, so go to the third page, uh, uses generally not allowed on or required for open space land. And the second one down, you'll see again, all walled buildings or manufactured homes except for public restroom. Except for a public restroom. So, it looks like if we can get them to okay it, and it's gonna be, uh, if we can get them to okay it, then we should be able to move forward with bathrooms down there. I wanna get a jump on that. This, I'm gonna hand out to you guys. This'll go along with, uh, resolutions tonight, um, for the grant. This is some back, background information. Reggie, I gave you probably the wrong one. Who, who'd I give you? Me. How about that one? So this is some background and Don, you can hand that one. That's the background on the, uh, ARP grant that I have the resolution in for tonight. Um, we're trying to get a jump on that one too. If you're looking at, uh, one, two, the fourth page in, you're gonna see a photo there. Uh, where that great big star is, is where we'd like, we thought about. Melina Thaler and I from, uh, Clinton County Health Department, thought it'd be a good spot if we could put a bus stop there. They'd have that easy access drive in and then drive right back out. It's off of the main road, twenty-two B. Uh, the secondary thought was a primary a year ago when we brought this up the first time, which is that vacant lot on twenty-two B to, if you're facing the post office, the left-hand side of it right there. But, uh, they'd have to park, uh, the cart bus on twenty-two B or the shoulder of twenty-two B. So she thought maybe it'd be better here and so did Cart. So, uh, Cart's willing to work with us on, on this one, um. The second part of this bus stop would be, um, the expansion of the trail down at the, uh, River Street Park. So, um, that looks to be about a half a mile, which we probably do with the funding that we're applying for, for this grant. Um, it's a, one we haven't applied for before. Uh, forty, I did a, we both had to do a seminar on this. The ARP recommended that you do a seminar. Uh, over forty percent of ARP grants are given out to, uh, towns, rural towns the size of ours. So, we got almost fifty percent chance of getting something. And we'll see what happens. Yep, yep, that's the whole thing. Yep, that'd be on Emery Street, where they have the, the drive-in and the drive right back out. They would have to give us two, uh, two parking spots of that. But most people park here, 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 or here, here, here. So I don't think that'd be a, I talked, I tried to get ahold of Mr. Maddox. He's the one that, um, their company owns that and they lease it to the post office. I think they had like a thirty-year lease or longer on that, so. Uh, he hasn't reached back out to me yet. He did last summer when I talked to him the first time. Um, then that was when the town class where we got that bus, uh, station grant and we really did it. They thought that would be utilized more over there. Um, but it never hurts to, to try. It don't cost us anything to put this thing on.
So if you do get the bus stop, is there like a minimum requirement of usage?
The only, no, the only thing that, it's gonna be, like I said, I, when I talked to Melina, it's gonna be one of those things you build it, they'll, they'll come. You know what I mean? Right now, there's nothing. And right now, there's no schedule. So people can't look at Cart and say, okay, the bus stops in, in, uh, Town of Scholar Falls at, at the Morrisonville Post Office on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday at these times. There's none of that. So there's, you don't know, you know what I mean? Um, one of the things with ARP is, uh, the, the bigger your population of seniors, the better chance you get of getting the grant, cause it's an ARP grant. Uh, our population by the last, uh, census was up there, was around thirty-eight, forty percent. So, that, that should help us here. Um, so yeah, it, it, it don't cost anything to try. Uh, Melina was the one that helped us with the eight thousand dollar grant she got us on the complete streets a year ago and all of that work that we did with that. I just wanted to give you a background before I drop that resolution on you. I know that was new information than I had the other night at the work session. That could scare me. Um, any questions on any of that? All right. So unfinished business, uh, I think we took care of the web stuff enough. I took care of the IT stuff. We'll have to work on that. So I bring this right to resolutions. All right, uh, starting with resolution twenty-three dash thirty. Whereas a continuing education training program for justice court judges will be held in Schenectady on March thirteenth, March fifteenth through March fifteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Philip Van Arwick would like to attend the training, be it therefore resolved that the town board authorizes the attendance of said conference and expenses will be charged to the general fund as provided for in the twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, under discussion, cost to the town would be for meals, mileage, and accommodations. Uh, he's another one that's required to do so many, um, hours annually to keep his judge show. So, if I can get a motion?
Motion.
By Vern.
Second.
All right, Reg. Any other discussion? We'll call.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yeah. Some food. Okay, uh, resolution twenty-three thirty-one. Whereas according to section twenty-nine ten of the town law, the supervisor must repair and file with the town clerk within ninety days after the close of the physical year, an annual physical report accounting for all monies received and dispersed by him, together with the certificates of the banks or trust companies where town monies are dispo, deposited, uh, showing the amount of monies on deposit. And whereas the accountant has requested an extension of filing of the twenty twenty-two report with the Office of the State Comptroller for an additional thirty days, be it resolved that the town board authorizes the request and the supervisor shall submit to the town clerk and the state comptroller a copy of the annual financial report on or before April thirty. We do this every year just to make sure if we don't get it to them on time, we got the extra time. Um, the, a motion. I'll do this one. I'll make the motion.
I, can I just ask a question?
Sure. No, you can't. No, just kidding.
I, I, I'm, I don't understand it. So is this like something that happens every year?
Yeah. It's odd that we're, we're bound by odd every year. And we're bound to, to give the, all the financial reports to the comptroller's office. But every year, we always do the thirty-day extension that adjusts the extra time in case our auditor doesn't get it done by the appropriate time.
Okay, so it's not like this is an exception?
Oh, no. We do this every year. Well, I think, we did it every year for the last three years, cause it's just a.
Twenty-eight years.
Hey, there you go, twenty-eight. Although we haven't always used those full amount of time and give them to you.
Okay, I, I thought maybe it was like exceptional or that.
No, no.
For some reason.
Nope, nope.
I'll second.
Although we need to get an auditor this year, cause our other auditor quit. So that's another reason why this year is more important, cause we have to still find an auditor. Cause our other auditor retired.
And we'll still get in by, by our, by your state?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second it.
Well, I'm glad somebody did.
Okay, Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes. All right, twenty-three thirty-two, motion by where? As the town of Scholar Falls is continuing with the process of the project replacement and reconstruction of the Marshall Water District, whereas the town of Scholar Falls has applied and been approved for a bond from USD ARD to help fund the Marshall Water Project. Whereas, and whereas the USD ARD requires that a bond counsel be hired and a contract agreement be written that follows their guidelines and requirements as set forth in the prior to bid documents. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls has contacted Douglas E. Goodfriend and established bond attorney to perform legal services related to the bond with the stipulation of the not exceed limit of twenty-five thousand as set forth in the USD ARD filed agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town supervisor sign and execute the contract between the town of Scholar Falls and Douglas E. Goodfriend, partner and attorney-at-law to be the town bond counsel for Marshall Water Replacement and Reconstruction Project for a fee not to exceed twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. So basically, I put the fee in there that was allowable, uh, by the, um, original bidding proposals and he came in under it. Um, because it's a, because it's not to exceed, I'm sure that's why he put it in for twenty-four seven fifty, but he don't think it's gonna be anywhere near there, but he has to cover himself, so. Um, can I get a motion? And we're gonna have a discussion with him?
I, I'm over.
Sherm?
Second.
Um, second by Reggie. Any discussion? Any further discussion? Need me to explain this to him?
No, I, well, actually, what I'd like to say is this, all these resolutions that we're working on tonight, that goes along with the whole process of going after our grant money and everything else. We've already, basically already authorized Kevin to proceed with the process. We've already, basically already authorized Kevin to proceed with the process, and this is part of the process, correct?
It is, but U S D A R D is, has got a whole set of guidelines. That these things have to happen, they call it prior to bid, okay, be- before we put out the contracts. Like the materials and, you know, the contractor and all that, they, they, there's a check off list of three pages. And they're not double spaced, that I have to make sure that we have in place, so. Bond counsel is one of them, and we would need a bond counsel anyways, because there's none of us that are gonna.
Right, exactly.
You know, take the, the bonds, yeah, there's, there's too much, there's multi pages of legal documents that need to be done under. Under bond, under the bond counsel.
Right, just so everyone knows, it's part of the process, which we've already agreed to continue the process. So I, I will make that motion.
Alright, Reggie, second minute, um, if there's no further discussion, then roll call.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yeah. And everybody did see that the contract was right there. Alright, twenty three thirty three, whereas the town of Scholar Falls is continuing with the needed and required documents of. Um, project requirement and reconstruction of the Marshall Water District. Whereas the town of Scholar Falls has hired La Burge Group as the engineering firm for the Marshall Water Project. Whereas, and whereas the U S D A R D requires that an engineering firm be hired and a contract. Agreement be written to their guidelines and requirements as set forth in the prior to bid documents. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls has already contracted La Burge Group as the Stavros Engineering Company. To date to perform these services related to the project with the stipulation of a not to exceed. The limit of monies as set forth in the U S D A R D filed agreement of areas of their responsibility and there's like. Fifteen of them, and, and that's all in U S D A R D's lawyer's hands right now, they gotta agree that, that contract. Um, now therefore be it resolved that town supervisor sign and execute the contract between the town of Scholar Falls and La Burge. To the uh, town's engineering firm for the Marshall Water Replacement and Reconstruction Project for a fee not to exceed again. The project cost is filed, so if you look at that next page, that is all of the line items under. The uh, eight point one agreement. Including uh, almost two million dollars of um, I can't say inflation, they kicked it back to Washington when they call it that. Overages or uh, other costs.
This is what we went over in the work session.
Yeah, yep, and, and it's the same one that's been around for the last few years since I've been working on it. So these are all those areas that, again, if you look on that next page, this is, I call it the bible, this is. Right out of the uh, original proposal, so that's where you're gonna find, if you go back to these, that's where you're gonna find. That he held, I did have a little conversation, and they, you came down when Ron was here, and he, remember, he said he would hold two to these, cause he was gonna. He was looking at four hundred and fifteen instead of four hundred, and then uh, the bidding, um. Construction observation, he was gonna go to one seventy five instead of one fifty, but he did hold himself to all those other ones, right? Like every time I get more money, somebody wants more money, so.
Could I just, um, I don't know, I'm gonna ask Mike this, cause I didn't do this resolution, thank you for doing my resolution, that's why I was out.
I did the best I could.
But shouldn't Mike, shouldn't we have a price on this resolution? Project, this is just project cost is filed, which is, that's how I would have did it, but I would have asked you about it first.
No, I think this is okay, cause it says filed, the U S A, D A R D, filed amounts.
Yeah, that's a complete, yep, that's the one that we all find on board, so if you look, you see it on the box? This is, this is a complete project, the eight point one.
Right.
And then if you look, I got the red marks there, where all these, these come into play just so the board members knew. But, I mean, I, I gotta read them out if you want, I really don't care for the record, it's uh, soil boring and analysis is uh. I better start up top, survey and mapping, one twenty five, hundred twenty five thousand, soil boring and analysis, forty thousand. Permitting, five thousand, engineering, four hundred thousand, um, preliminary engineering was eight thousand five, we've already paid for that. That's why that one's lined out and says completed, um, construction observation is one fifty, he held to that. Uh, grant administration is uh, thirty thousand, environmental, um, is twenty five thousand. And then if you look at that last one, just so you guys on the board know, you see where it says one hundred thousand there for interest during construction?
I see it.
So the interest on that the first year, if we do like the, the, up to that three million dollars. Projected to be about sixty thousand that first year, it'll be less on the second bond, or excuse me, band, band. That we do the second year, because that's when we'll hit about seventy five percent of the project complete. And that's when all the rest of the uh, C D V G funds we can use right out the back, the one twenty five, um. The two million five hundred six, two thousand five hundred for congressional funding, they haven't even got an A B C alphabet letter. Agency to, to figure out who's administering that down to us yet, so that could be C D V G, it could be U S D A R D, it could be. Or C, I don't know who it's gonna be, uh, but, but by twenty four into twenty five, we'll have that money and that's already locked in, I just got another, um. Another paper from Carmen, Jonathan Carmen from the least of phonics office today saying that I have to attend the seminar. Uh, on Friday, a Zoom seminar, so anyways, um. The interest looks like we're gonna be pretty good, we're what they said we would need for the band, so. I, I'm understanding it more and more as I go along, it's just, it's a lot, it's a big project. If you got any questions, you let me know before I move on.
Project cost as filed, that you do with that?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, so Morrison by Sherm, I'll second it, I ain't got a problem with it. So, unless there's any further discussion.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yeah.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. And, and basically this whole contract, we already had a contract, and it just wasn't written to U S D A R specs. Because they have to have a not to exceed limit according to U S D A R D, that kind of holds them down to those numbers. At least I know things, alright, um. Next one is gonna be twenty three thirty four. Whereas the town of Scholar Falls is continuing with the process of the project replacement reconstruction of Marshall Water District, and whereas. The town of Scholar Falls has applied and been approved for multiple funding from U S D A R D. C D V G and congressional funding to help fund the Marshall Water Project, and whereas. This requires that a fin- a financial firm be hired and a contract agreement be written that follows their guidance and requirements. As set forth in the prior to bid documents, and whereas the town of Scholar Falls has contacted. UniState Financial and established financial institution to perform these services with the stipulation of not to exceed limit. And in this case, of three thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, or one percent of the band per million required. Now therefore be it resolved that the town supervisor sign and execute the contract between the town of Scholar Falls. And UniStep to be the town's financial council for the Marshall Water Replacement and Reconstruction Project. For the fee not to exceed three thousand eight hundred dollars, now that's, that's for twenty three into twenty four. Um, the contract, if you go to, just cause I want you guys to make sure you understand that. Oh, you gotta go back, you gotta go to appendix B. Confuse myself for a minute, okay, so in appendix B, where it says fees and expenditures. Under the UniStat one, it would start with the first, and then appendix A, and then the B, so that is basically, I think it's the second to the last page. Yep, cause then you go on to C, so at the top, you'll see the, all the fees, alright, that. They could charge or would charge, and that was confusing as hell to me, so when I talked to Noah. I said, I want somewhere in big bold print, uh, what you're gonna charge us for this project. Because this is a common drafted contract for all of their work, okay? Uh, so, we see it in bold there, it says in twenty twenty three, the fee for the bond. Anticipation note will be uh, three thousand eight hundred dollars, and in twenty twenty four, the fee for the renewal of the bond. And they call it a band, alright, uh, ant- anticipation note will be three thousand eight hundred dollars, so he's guaranteeing he won't raise it. And then it is anticipated for the U S D A, uh, Rural Development, uh, loan, which is the R D. Uh, will close in the, in um, the years twenty four to twenty five. The fee for our role in closing of this, uh, such loan is not expected to exceed four thousand. So, he's, he's done pretty forceful right up front saying what he's willing to do.
Just a little correction there in the.
Yep.
Uh, the one, two, three, the last line of the third whereas paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Where it says banned, that, that should be ban, all caps, B A N, all caps. Bond anticipation note.
Alright.
Yeah.
Did I write that anywhere else in there?
I mean.
That wasn't me.
I don't think so.
I've even been calling it banned, I thought that's what he said it was, B A N, it said banned, uh, banned, okay, so I'm learning. But it's, it's basically the, they sell the notes like a bond, and.
Can I ask a stupid question again, cause I didn't do this resolution?
Yep.
Not to exceed three thousand eight hundred dollars for the year two thousand twenty three? Cause there's different prices for two thousand twenty four and two thousand twenty five.
So should I take that out and um, hold him to his, cause I wrote this. And I was expecting that we'd have to do another contract when they do another ban in two thousand twenty four into twenty five, right? Or can we, because he put prices in there for twenty four and twenty five, say, we're hiring him right straight through, so he can't pull over it?
Yeah, I. All of this is in, you know, in the bonding, and, and I've been involved in that before. My recollection in having conversations with Doug Goodfriend is that. We only, we only do the resolution once for the bond anticipation notes.
Okay.
So I, yeah.
So. Replacement and reconstruction project for the fee not to exceed the, can we say the filed amounts in the contract?
Or, uh.
Are the quoted amounts in the contract?
I, I think we can say the quoted amounts in, in the contract, yeah.
Right at the end. Cause that's where now therefore be it resolved, that's the real meat and potatoes of it.
Would have to be in the, the fourth paragraph too as well, right?
Are you talking about down in the next paragraph, huh?
Yes, where it says not to exceed three hundred, three thousand eight hundred.
Four million percent.
Yeah. The stipulation of, and not to exceed the limit of, we'll just take, um. Again, quoted amounts in contract?
Yeah.
Instead of, uh, the one.
I mean, otherwise we have a, a page of.
Yeah, that's what I mean to put in there.
So not to exceed the quoted amount of the contract.
Yeah. The quoted amounts in contract, in the contract, yeah, yeah, the quoted amounts in contract. The limit of, I better would say that, the limit of the quoted amounts in the contract. So we're kicking out the band and all that?
Yeah.
Just leave it, cause it's already in it.
Right. Cause they, they talk about that.
So in the last paragraph then, is it gonna be the not to exceed the limit of the quoted amount, or we're just gonna keep the quoted amount of the contract?
I think just the quoted amounts of the contract there.
We'll take out not to exceed.
No, you need that in there.
Not to exceed.
The other, the other one's talking about.
Eight hundred.
Not to exceed limit.
And put the quoted amount of the contract.
Quoted amount.
Okay.
So, so yeah.
In contract.
In, in the, in the upper paragraph.
Yeah.
You're talking about the not to exceed limit of, of the quoted amounts in the contract, whereas down below, you're just. Referencing the quoted amounts in the contract.
I don't know, excuse the one on the top, alright, what, is there any further discussion on that before we get into emotional?
If I could just say one thing, this, UniStat, this is, there's only like three companies that do this.
Yeah, there's only three.
This is one of the top.
Yeah, and they're in, the, the one that's closest to us.
Right.
But they are, there's only three of them that do this kind of big job stuff.
It's not like you have a big choice.
No, and they were, like I say, the closest one, and, um, they have worked with, uh, Douglas Goodfriend before, so. They're familiar with the bond council that we have, so that, that helps a lot also. Okay, if there's no other changes, can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Sherm. If there's no other discussion, and we're thinking we got it written right now, then uh, roll call.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yeah.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. Okay, the next resolution is twenty three thirty five. Whereas the town of Scholar Falls is moving forward with the highway garage floor and drain replacement in addition. And addition of an oil water separator, and whereas the town of Scholar Falls has used the services of Barton and Le Judas for this project to date. And whereas Barton and Le Judas has provided an updated contract agreement to include engineering for an oil water. Separator and rebidding the remainder of the project that was not awarded in twenty twenty two. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls. Has contracted Barton and Le Judas, an established engineering firm to continue services related to the project for the amount of four thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the town supervisor sign that and execute the contract between the town of Scholar Falls. And Barton Le Judas to provide engineering for use in design, development, and bidding phase of this project for the sum of four thousand dollars. Uh, so basically Barton and Le Judas was hired last year for the floor and drain replacement. Only one contracted bid was received by the town, it was not awarded by the town board due to the quote being much higher. Than predicted, and it was the only one that was received, uh, we had all decided to put this back out to bid this time of the year, so we could lock our, hopefully, contractor down. Um, this is, like I said, the only addition is, um, I asked them to give us a price on an oil water separator for engineering. We're gonna need it up there at one point in time, even if we don't do it right now, at least we'll have that all done, is my thoughts of it.
Okay, little discussion on that, because I was absent from that.
Yep.
Um, in terms of the oil-water separator, I see where they're projecting a below-grade system.
Yep.
Which would be, of the two systems, would be the more expensive one. Uh, I guess the reason for that would be to avoid the continual pumping. And my question is, is there really room over at that site to put a system, a big system in, in the back? Due to the way the grading is over there, being, you know, going up?
Well, we didn't really discuss what way we would go about this, that's kind of up to the board to discuss that, um. They're both below grade, the, the tanks are in the ground for the holding, and, uh, i- if we go with the, uh, filtration system and then into leach field, the leach field's below grade, it's under grade.
Right.
So I think that's just the, the way that they word it, is because it's not above ground tank that you're pumping into, they, it would be below ground. Even then, the, the fire station's the same way, they're in the ground.
So
They're below grade.
They'll go over there and assess it anyway, come up with a plan.
Yeah, because we're asking them, we would be asking them to then look at oil-water separator. I think that if we're gonna do it for four grand, you know what I mean? We'd probably end up at least paying another twenty-six to twenty-eight hundred dollars to just finish the bidding out. And, uh, on what we had already, you know, worked with them on for design of the garage floor and, and drains.
I don't, Mike had talked at one point about putting a heavy-duty truck lift in over there. In, in a particular area over there, is that something separate than this?
Yeah, I would, I would probably mention that to them to make sure that wherever the, I don't know, I, uh, the, the newer ones, let me do some research on it, because the newer ones, you don't, the cylinder is no longer in the cement, you know what I mean?
Sure.
They usually operate hoist, or ratchet hoist on each side now. Um, they even got, I watched them pick up that, the eighty-eight thousand GBW fire truck with four-wheel ones. Wheel them right into the, underneath the, the four wheels and lifts the whole thing up.
Okay.
So, we can look into that and see what's the best fix, if he wants to hoist, and if he's got the money to put one in there.
Okay, thanks.
Firework, where would you ever put one in on there?
He talked about that second bay, the closest to his office, that's where they do most of the mechanic work, and I agree. They're not gonna be able to get a fire off the ground without doing it.
You're almost gonna waste your money on a lift if you're only gonna lift it three foot.
Yeah.
You might as well get underneath it, I agree with you.
Um, getting back to what we talked about at the, uh, work session, um, for this four thousand dollars, are they gonna give us a cost analysis based on the two different systems we had talked about? Pumping it into a, a holding tank?
I think they were gonna give us, once they went up and looked at it, their, their idea of what one, that that would be best for us to utilize. And then it's naturally up to the town board to decide what way we go with it. But, uh, they wanted to go up and take a look at it and see what they had to work with up there. Because they didn't look, they looked at, when Barton and Le Judas went up there along with the other contractors that looked, or engineers that looked at it, they were looking in the building, at the floors and the drains and what they were gonna have to do, we weren't really going in the back and look at that. Other than to say that, even the floor drains were going to a central location on the back wall, so that it would receive an oil-water separator, you know what I mean?
Reg, were you at the work session?
No. No, I wasn't.
So we talked about a filter system
Sure.
And a, uh, basically a drywell type system where you would have to have it pumped. So that's what my question is, is for four thousand dollars, would they be able to give us a cost analysis, uh, over say a ten-year period? This is what it's gonna cost if you do it with a filter system, which may cost you more money initially? Or if you have to have it pumped every six months, I think that's what you said in the first session.
Could even be more up there.
You know, so if they gave us a, you know, like, you guys pump it, and this is what the cost is gonna be, so
Wouldn't it be sort of a D E C related issue to maybe ask them for some input in that?
No, they'll go with either one.
Now, D E C really don't give a crap as long as you're doing that.
As long as you got one, that's all they care.
You're gonna
They're still gonna come down with the cost.
No, I'm saying, unless, unless we go with the filtration system, then they're gonna want logs, and we talked about that.
Okay, thank you.
And then, those logs, there are fines if you do not keep them up and show when your bag filled, the bag flushed it and the whole thing, but, uh,
That's not, that's not Clint County Health Department, that's D E C, right? They would handle that, nothing to do with the health department.
As far as the oil-water separator?
Right, it'd be more D E C related, would you say?
Well, I would say the health department guys would have some say in that.
Okay.
Because they work with D E C for water preservation and decatam- and non-contamination of water sources around. So, you know, that's, I wouldn't dare say that I would cut them out, but no, but that's what, yeah, how you're done for.
Okay.
They'll get us what we need and
Real, but how you doing, by the way? You alright? Uh, based on this four thousand dollars, what are we getting for four thousand dollars? Are they just gonna put this out to bid, figure out?
They're gonna, they're gonna, what's in the contract there? Basically, what they're gonna do is they're gonna rebid out the other project. Okay?
They're putting the paper, so I don't have to do that.
Alright, and then they said that they give us a cost analysis, or engineering, excuse me, engineering on, um, the oil-water separator. But it's all broken down into different phases. If you look at the scope of services, design, develop, and building phase, we'll tell you, you know, update the previously bid construction and contract documents with new below-grade oil-water interceptor system and associated electrical alarm panel, remember I told you that they'll have an alarm? So, uh, basically they're looking, that tells me right there, they're looking at a tank, okay, because the other one wouldn't have an alarm. Um, submit one set of one hundred percent contracted drawings and specifications to the town for final review. Develop the final con- uh, contract, uh, documents for building renovation, including contract drawings, specifications, incorporating and applicable review comments received as a result of the one hundred percent contract and drawing review. Yeah, they'll come and talk to us, they'll come and see us, answer any questions. I don't wanna read this whole thing.
No, I, I, you know, the only thing that I'm looking at, and again, even, even with this, uh, resolution, it doesn't actually, we're gonna have to figure out. They're, they're giving us a contract based on, I think what you're, what you're saying is, I mean, so
Yeah.
We gotta do our own cost analysis.
Well, no, we could hire them to do a cost analysis, but they're gonna give us a, a in- engineering on this and what they believe it will cost to be bid out, and how much it will, you know, the materials are and all that, just like we did last time.
Right, so, but they're going, I, I, I'm sorry, I could take it off time, but it's, they're gonna, they're gonna bid it at, okay, this, this is the way we're gonna do it.
Yeah, but it's up to us to decide what way
Alright, so what if we wanna do it another way?
Well, then that's something, like I said, before, we tell them to go ahead with the engineering on a tank.
That's all I'm saying.
Then we'll tell them to go ahead with engineering on a filtration system with, you know, the, the leach field.
Because us not knowing how it operates, we're not gonna be able to
I don't know.
To do a cost analysis, there's no way.
No, I can tell you, it's more, it's gonna be more with naturally filtration system, but it's gonna save you money and alarm.
Yeah, I mean, you explained that to us at the work session.
Right, I don't know what, I don't know what we're agreeing to let them do. I, I, maybe I'm missing something. We, they're gonna bid it one way.
We, we need to, right off the bat, to, to, to at least further the bidding on what we didn't do last year, which was because it came in at two hundred and three thousand, it was supposed to come in at between sixty-nine and seventy-nine thousand, and we only got the one bid.
I do remember that.
Okay, and then we had Loire do the front of the floors, which are gonna have to be taken out of their contract in the bidding process, and they did, rid of the aprons out front, because we wanted those done so that the doors didn't have a four-and-a-half inch gap where the, for the heat, oh, and oh. But so that, the, the way this is, resolution is written, that they will do the the engineering of a oil-water separator. But I didn't, I didn't lock this down to what one.
And, and so is it the same rights region? I, I don't think we have enough information.
I think we ought to table it, that's what I
We can do it, but I, I would at least urge the board to do the bidding, to get that, their engineering and bidding out. I don't care, alright.
No, I, no, I
Table.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the fact that we
Because like I said, you're gonna, we're gonna
I know, you're checking the can here.
And it's gonna be another
This is what we did before, and we put ourselves in the bind.
Table.
We went from seventy thousand to two hundred and thirty thousand, because we sat and waited and waited and waited.
Right, and so I'm not
But there's nothing that we can't work out here, okay?
Oh, Kevin.
The engineering hasn't been completed yet, you're hiring them to do the engineering.
Kevin, my concern would be this, okay, if you listen to it.
Yep, go ahead.
Reading that over, it's more or less like, they're going in there and they're gonna design a filtration system, which is gonna entail a bunch of the property behind the town garage over there. If that's a system that we wanna do, let's proceed and do it. I'd rather personally have the other type system, because I personally don't think there's enough property over there to be doing that. And that's just personal opinion, that's all, and that's why I asked for a table, that's why, that's the only reason I did.
There's multiple ways that you can do fields now, okay? Um, Algen systems don't take anywhere near what a conventional system would take. So, you can do, they're, they're, they're less than half the size of a normal system. So I don't care how much land's in the back, which I know there's plenty enough to put leach fields in back there, because I've been back there.
Right.
But, uh, you're looking at maybe two to three fifty-foot lines in a D box. They, they, they got plenty of room to do that, even if it was on the side. Um, but the biggest thing is, like I said, is to work with them, to get them hired. So, if we don't wanna hire them, we'll table it and we'll see, you're gonna be into April, before they can even try to fit it out.
And again, I, I, I really'd like to just stress, I don't know what we're hiring them to do. What system, we got two different systems that we could possibly
You're going to hire them to do whatever system the, the, the
So either system is only gonna, and we're only gonna, we're guarantee, or, we're, we're authorizing to spend four thousand dollars to design whatever system we tell them to do.
Basically, that's what the, the
Is that right?
The contract was.
Okay, but we picked a system.
The board would pick the system.
And it's gonna be four thousand dollars.
That's what they wrote in their contract, not me, but I have no problem with the contract.
I'm okay with that, I just, you see what I'm saying, Reg, uh, Bernard, I don't, I don't know, we have two choices. And we haven't decided which way we wanna go, and if it's gonna be four thousand either way, then now we gotta come up with
I thought we did discuss this at the last, at our work session, and we decided we wanted to go with the filtration one.
But we didn't know, we didn't have a cost analysis.
No.
You're not going to get a cost analysis until
Number one, you don't know how much
You get the engineer.
What are you gonna put into that system, we have no clue, there's no way to figure that out?
This is to hire them for, to be the engineer to bid the contract, put them out to bid, and to engineer a system for oil-water separator.
Right, I'm, I'm good with what I did there.
They will then give us a cost analysis as part of their, like the big packets that we got last time, of, this is what you're asking for, so here's your engineering and design part, and here's what the bidding is thinking.
I hate to be a hardass on this, but Mike Snyder, he's the one that's gonna have to do the filters, and you're saying they're like a bull. What if Mike says, well, I'm not gonna go out there every month or every six weeks and, and clean that filter? I'd, I'd rather go with the other system. We, I
Mike was here at the last meeting and did not say he wouldn't do either or.
Yeah, he didn't, he did.
So he should, so, that's kinda saying
You're a hundred percent right.
That's kinda saying, whatever we go with, he's gotta maintain, that's his area, he's the supervisor of that area, he's responsible for it. We gotta start putting the load on who's supposed to be taking it. We can't keep saying, well, he don't wanna do it.
No, I
I'm sorry, he's hired for that job, it's his responsibility with his men to do that job, that's his area. It'd be like us saying, if we were as councilmen, have to go in and clean the bathroom every night at seven o'clock. Well, if we agree to it, then it's our area, we gotta do it.
Alright, but he hasn't, he didn't agree to it. That's all, all I'm saying, and I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time at all, I'm just saying there's two different systems that we can use. This guy, or they're gonna, they're gonna charge us four thousand dollars, and I'm okay with that, and they're gonna give us a cost analysis and say, okay, this is the best system, uh, that you can put out. And if it's, if it's the, uh, filter system or the, uh, drywell system or whatever it is
Read this right here, read where it says, design, develop, and bidding phase. Says, update and previously bid construction and contract documents with new below-grade oil-water separator system and, uh, um, excuse me, associated electric alarm panel. Submit one set of one hundred, uh, percent contract drawings and specify to the town for final review and comment. So you change anything you want and do anything you wanna do there. Develop and final contract development for building renovation, uh, including contract drawings and specification incorporated, incorporating the applicable review comments, again, whatever we tell them to do, as received as a result of the hundred percent contract drawing review, which we have to agree on that. Contract documents will include stamped contract, uh, drawings and specifications, including general conditions provisions on the bidding. They're just, this is, uh, uh, a contract just to hire them to get it out.
I, why don't you speak with them, if you can, and see if they can do a plan for both separators for us? Explaining why they would use the one they're recommending and why they're saying
That's exactly what I'm saying, I, if we don't, I don't know.
They say they wanna do the pumping one.
They're gonna have to go up there, like I said, and look at it first, but they're not.
Can we hire them and just say, this is what, how we want you to do it? Give, you tell us, we, we know we got the choice of two systems, go up, figure it out, we'll hire you for four thousand dollars, and tell us the best one to have. To me, that's a cost analysis.
We don't have anybody hired to do it.
Let's hire them, four thousand dollars, but tell them that's what we want, is a cost on both these two systems. See what they say, they may come back and say, yeah, I don't know.
I, I think what they will do, like I stated on the record earlier, is they will come up, they will look at the building, and they will look at the grounds, and they will make a suggestion on what one, they would suggest that we use, okay?
Yeah.
But it's gonna be up to the board to decide what one you do, you know? One is gonna be more cost effective.
So they gotta give you two options.
Well, that's fine, if they're gonna give us two options, and they're gonna give us their, their plan on option A for the filter system, and this is why. Option B will be the, the one you
And then we would do it.
Gotta drain up, and why?
I think what they're, they're planning on doing is going out there, looking at it, from what I see on here, they're gonna bring us back, um, the drawings and bring us back their opinion of what we should do up there, and then like it says in here, then we have the right, the right to review and make comments, and then decide what you wanna do, you know? And change anything you wanna change, just like you, you came with anything else.
So, so Reg
I, I hate to say this, but would, what a thirty-day, just basically tabling it for thirty days?
Why are we tabling it?
Yeah.
Why?
Yep, we could table it.
That's right, I, I wanna know why you wanna table it, Reg, that's why I wanna know your opinion to me, why are we tabling it?
I think one system designed, why would we tell them to go ahead and design a system that we don't even know if we want it yet? Let's try to, first of all, take it in a phase and say, what do you suggest? They're an engineering firm, have them tell us what to do, then pass the resolution. I mean, it's four grand, it's a lot of money.
Well, and, and Reg, you know, I, 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 and that's what I'm trying to say, is that, but I, I agree with Kevin, the fact that, listen, we can't wait that much longer.
Just thirty days, we can't wait?
You can wait as long as you want, right? You keep kicking the can down the road, get down, get down there next year.
I'm definitely against waiting any longer, we waited last time, and much of where we are, this is exactly where we are right now on waiting.
You need to hire them, before you can work with them. If you want me to get ahold of another engineering company, we'll do that too. You need to hire them before you can work with them. If you want me to get a hold of another engineering company, we'll do that too. I don't care. I'm just saying, we can't work with them if we don't hire them.
I wish Mike Snyder was present to.
I don't even know what Mike has to do with it.
Mike would have anything to do with it because he don't know any more about this than the four of us second year guys. Uh, any of us.
Let's, we've talked about this long enough.
Let's uh.
No, go ahead.
I'll make a motion when we, when we pass it at four thousand dollars, but before, let's see what they're gonna give us.
I would say we make the motion, like I said before, that we can pass it. They gotta give us something in writing stating why they would put this system in. In a reason and why they would put this system in in a reason. That's all we gotta explain to them.
Will they do that, Kevin?
I think that they're gonna, from what I just read to you, and y'all let it in front of you, okay? It's right here. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but what it looks like to me is they're gonna look at it and recommend. Whatever system they think will work the best at.
As long as they give us that reason why.
It is still up to the town under comments and review, and we could say, nope. We don't wanna uh uh under the ground tank in there. We want the filtration system with leach field. They'll do whatever it is, you know what I mean? I, engineering wise, I don't think it really isn't a cost them anymore to do a either direction.
Well, a good engineer is gonna give you the best system either way.
That's why you hire them.
So Reg, that's what I, that's, that's what I'd like to do, is get, get these guys hired. Get the, the projected projects. Whether it's one way or the other. By then, Mike will be here, he can, he can listen to what his obligations would be if we go one way or the other.
What I can do is I can call him tomorrow and if. It is not gonna go that way, then I won't sign the contract.
Perfect.
How's that?
Can we, so we can, we can authorize you to spit, to sign this contract. Providing you know what we want.
Yeah.
Is that okay with you, Reg?
Yep, let's go with it.
I make the motion. You got a second?
I'll second.
Uh, I'll contact each, each one of you tomorrow and let you know if, if, if I'm wrong. So do we gotta add that to the thing?
No, I don't think so.
After all that mess? This is the one I didn't think I was gonna have any problem with. You already hired them last year. For God's sake.
Can we trust you?
You can make that decision personally.
Did you second that?
I, your motion, I second.
Might direct changing it.
I don't think you have to change them.
Perfect, roll call.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Fakso? Mister Randall?
Perfect, next.
Yes.
See, very easy to work with.
Oh, no, you're not. You've got my blood pressure so high right now, you have no idea.
You can start.
Okay. All right, the next resolution is twenty-three thirty-six. Uh, whereas the town of Scholar Falls has completed research to construct a recreation splash pad. On the town hall property located at nine nine seven Mason Street and has completed engineering and mapping for this project. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls has applied for and received a DASNY grant for one hundred and twenty-five thousand to. Help complete the project and whereas the sole source of the splash pad is Vortex Aquatic Structures International. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls has already contract contacted Vortex as the established engineering. And construction company to perform services related to the project and they have provided us with a complete contract. Plans and quote to be provided, to provide this service that meets all. Uh, requirements set forth by ADEA, ADEA Engineering and the town. Now, therefore be it resolved, the town supervisor sign and execute the contract between the town of Scholar Falls. And Vortex Aquatic Structures International to hire. This construction firm for this splash pad project with the fee not to exceed one hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven dollars and eleven cents. As quoted. Basically, this will lock us in uh to this contract. Um, it went up about four grand from last year. I do have another resolution after this one, that we probably, I, we are gonna get, I can't say that. We, we will probably get some more money from, um, that'll probably take care of at least if they increase to.
So all told, we need to come up with fifty-one thousand dollars. Approximately.
Yeah, they went from forty-eight to fifty-one, cuz that's, we're gonna use ARPA on that. Um, the other thing that this doesn't take into consideration, so I put it in discussion and buy them, when I talk to Joe. Um, in-kind service work performed by the town will be deducted from the total quote. This was agreeable to Vortex International. So if Mike don't mind supplying the sand out of the pit, bringing it down here to put the base in or to put the sand in. Uh, excuse me, the sand filter in down here, um. The trucks, we don't have to hire a local holler, or he would have to hire a local holler to deliver, to deliver. Uh, even if we wanna scrape off, like I was talking to you about with the old burden done. After the engineer, ADEA has did everything so far, they did the uh. You weren't here, so you missed that, but you guys all got the plots and where he had it, he can go mount and spray all that. So thi- this is the max it, it could cost. So, it could go down from there. But you don't, you wanna stop it from going up here because if in a month from now, all his prices go up again, it's gonna go up again. You know what I mean?
Well, the fact is, is that what we talked about was that, number one, we can probably cut ten grand out of this just by having our. In-kind service.
So, all of that probably, yeah.
At least, uh, the other, the other thing being is that it's not really, if we're gonna use this out of the ARPA money.
Yep.
It's not like we gotta come up out of the general fund or whatever. This is something that would benefit the whole town. I'm a hundred percent behind you.
It's taken me, that's good, it's taken two and a half years to get it to this point, to get the hundred and twenty-five thousand locked in. Uh, you'll see another resolution coming up where I think we're gonna get some more money from this. Um, but I have to apply for that one, I need a resolution for it. Uh, so if you guys are good with this, this at least locks. Them into that price working. And I can't even get on the schedule until I get a contract with them. So.
I will offer the motion on this.
I'll second it.
Any other?
Discussion?
Yeah.
I spoke to Mike Crowdy today on this issue in detail. I was hoping, I was hoping I'd be able to get you guys to table this until next month. But in terms of, if I can't, it's no problem. But. I'm really concerned with it. It's such a seasonal type situation with this splash pad here. And it's just, it's fifty-one thousand dollars of ARPA money. That we could be using it like for a salt shed. There's other uses for ARPA. That would, just to me, I'm speaking for myself, would make a little bit more sense. And that's just my opinion, and Mike kind of reminded me in a way, he said, well. We've already passed it months ago, he said, we spoke about it. So. I, I'll go along with it, but I really honestly, I hate to spend fifty-one thousand on it. And we've gotta take a look at the maintenance on this. There's gonna be maintenance on this thing. And in terms of, in terms of, now Kevin, who have you been in touch with? Is that a US company or a Canadian company? I see here that they're listing.
Originally goes back to Rick.
Yes, I know.
Working on it.
Yes, yeah.
And he had contacted them. So all the engineering that we've done so far is all with uh Joe Denzick. And I gave you a packet, it was in your folder. The whole company was in there, all the information was there.
You did. Uh, is there any kind of a warranty on it, Kevin?
Well, I'm gonna guess there's a warranty on it, but I didn't look at that.
You didn't, yeah, I'm sure there is though.
I'm sure there's a warranty on it, yeah. And as far as uh maintenance, there, there shouldn't be much for maintenance because everything's self-draining. Um, you shut the water off to it, if. The conversation I had with the town of Plasberg, they were willing to put the water in, put the water pit in, put the water meter in. Put the vault in, um, put the street shut off on their dollar for helping them with the dog park over there. Like I said, we get about a half a million dollars here for tip of fees from landfill, so I, I like to do something for the, the kids in the community. To give them a little something back.
Okay, that's all I had.
I, I actually, you know what, Mike, Mike called me and said he talked to you. As far as I'm concerned with the ARPA money, this is the one thing that benefits the whole town. Not a different, you know, a special water district or a salt shed, which of course would be the whole town. But this is something we can give back to the youth in our town or even older people probably wanna run on.
Yeah, that's a community event, so even the parents that come there, they're social, I'd love to see. Love to see benches out there and pick the tables by it.
Reg, did you get a, did you get a colored copy of this whole projected project? It's, it's really impressive. I, I don't know.
Include a fencing, any fencing around it, Kevin, as well?
No, not in their costs.
No.
Right.
Okay, so, I mean, obviously, we'll need a fence of some kind around it, for sure.
Well, and like Kevin said, benches and stuff, we can really make this a, a really nice project.
And you're projecting this to start this fall? Yeah, you might have.
Earliest.
Early this fall, September, October, so.
And that's only if we can get in the schedule now.
What were you saying, Kevin? I'm sorry, I stepped out. What were you saying about, I, I, Reg had a good point there, the maintenance? There's gotta be some type of chlorine and.
No, because that's the reason that we went with this type of system rather than the, the water that is recouped. If you recoup the water and reuse the water, then it's like San Alex pool. You have to do your roaming test, your chlorine test, all that other stuff. But being that we're using potable water out of the municipal drinking supply. That's why it has to have its own meter, so we can meter as far as the direct budget for. Um, that it's one-time use. It goes into the drain, it goes out, and it goes into a sand filter and then. Dissipated into the air, just like any other.
These sand filters, obviously, are gonna have to be maintained, no?
No.
No?
It's a great big sand filter, so it's probably gonna be good for twenty-five years or thirty years or whatever they're, they're built for. It's just, it's a great big square.
Okay.
Put of sand in the ground that the drain line.
I was just, I was thinking the same note, Reg, but I didn't, I know I have a pool and I know what kind of maintenance there is. I was thinking, you're, we're gonna have the same thing here and who's gonna do it?
So was I.
That's at the end of the drain.
Okay.
It go, it just has to be, it has to go through a sand filter before.
Cause there's some type of heater must be, they heat the water or is it just?
No, it's gonna be whatever the water is coming out. Now, that's something that you can look at. They have a, like a. A box solar heater array that you can put into the plumbing so that the sun hits it and it warms it up before.
Yeah.
It goes.
That was kind of a concern that, I think it was Mister Don had brought up, about the temperature of the water. Coming out of the public water system being a little bit too cold for that. So your point in a heating system? Maybe we will have to do that.
Nah, I mean, I mean, my kids in the summer will.
For, for sure.
Used to grab the holes right out the side of the house and.
Okay.
The other, the other thing too that, uh, actually Kevin and I had talked about was talking with the town of Plasberg about maybe uh. Kicking in towards the cost of, of the water.
Oh, that'd be nice.
We will talk to them about.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But when I projected, I know it's gone up a hair, I think it was like thirteen hundred dollars for the year. If it ran every minute of every day for this, the season that we set.
We just discussed putting timers and stuff on it so it'll be shutting down.
For thought for you on this too is when the town of Plasberg comes in and puts in the water hookup. See if you can get a way of locking that for the winter time so somebody doesn't come along and turn the water back on.
Well, it, it'll be a street shut off, just like the normal ones alongside the road are now, so you'd have to have the five or six foot rod and. We could always, I, I guess they could, I think they do make a lock and.
On the tops, you can put a lock on them, yeah. Cause I hate to see a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of splash pad.
Right.
Ruined because somebody comes along and turns the water back on in the winter.
Yeah.
It's all broken, something broke.
That's true.
It was in the summer because we had a water fountain out there and the kids used to vandalize that terribly. Finally took it out.
Sam, you got any comments on this?
No.
Better bad?
I, I've seen them, I've been places where they use them and. They're constantly in use. When the weather's halfway decent, there are people in there all the time. I, I think it'll reuse a lot.
It'll be the only, only the second one in the whole area.
Has anybody looked into how much maintenance really is on them before we, we get going? On this, what, I mean, nothing for nothing, you got thirty kids out there. Twenty-seven of them, twenty-seven of them pee in it. When they're playing, where do you, there's gotta be a clean, there's gotta be something you have to do.
The sand filter, yeah. That was right through BEC and right through ADEA. As long as it's got a sand filter. There's a, you can't just let it go into a creek or a river or whatever. But if it's got a sand filter.
How about the pipe itself? Doesn't that have to be washed every night? With people?
No, because there are drains to the center. So anytime the water's running, it all drains to the center.
Yeah, it's not like sitting water, so everything drains out and goes out. It's not like a pool.
Sam, who else have, has one around locally? Yeah.
Locally, I'm not aware of.
City just put one in last fall.
Who did?
City Flasper.
Yep. Okay.
Do you know where it's at, Ken? Is that the one between Margaret Street and Dirty Street?
Yeah, I think so.
Smaller.
Okay.
I mean, roughly getting a two hundred thousand dollar. Amenity here for forty-eight, oh, yeah, forty-eight to fifty-one thousand. And something back for the community.
I'm just worried about if we do end up having maintenance. We don't even have people to do maintenance and our jobs that we need maintenance on. Who's gonna go out and do it?
Same guy takes care of it right now.
Ready for a roll call?
Same.
Ready.
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Fakso?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yeah.
All right, go to this next one, that'll help out.
You can blame him, not me tonight.
I, that's why I keep asking if she's okay.
I told, I told Vern to kick him every once in a while.
All right, let's see if we can make it through the last two. We only popped it down the floor. Uh, twenty-three thirty-seven, resolution that is. Whereas the town of Scholar Falls is continuing to make the town hall uh recreation park a favorable place for the community to visit. And enjoy heart healthy activities. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls has obtained mapping plans and cost estimates. For a new splash pad activity to join the playground at the venue, at this venue. And whereas the town of Scholar Falls has applied for and received a grant from DASNY, DASNY in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And has appropriated monies from ARPA in the twenty-twenty-three budget to achieve this goal. And whereas the town has received word that the project is a great candidate to receive additional funding. From the county, Clinton County, from Clinton County, under the Tobacco Settlement Funding Program. And whereas applying for this funding could further eliminate costs incurred during its construction. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the town supervisor sign and execute the tobacco settlement funding proposal. now therefore, be it resolved, the town supervisors sign and execute the Tobacco Settlement Funding Proposal Form, allowing the town of Skyler Falls to apply to Clinton County for this funding for a max amount allowable of uh, fifteen thousand dollars. Um, under discussion, I just wrote, I, I talked to Area Five County Legislature, uh, Richard Potiker. Uh, he's pledged his full support behind this project, he said that um, outside activity projects for tobacco settlement funding get a higher priority. He thinks it's a really good candidate for it. Um, I filled out the pack, the Tobacco Settlement Funding Proposal Form and it took me a couple hours to come up with what I had to write here and explain the um, community, um, uh, uh, benef- benefits of having this and the whole thing. So, again, last year I, they approved everyone that went in front of them. And that boiled down to about, that boiled down to five thousand dollars of grant per person that applied. Uh, so depending on how many apply this year and depending on what they wanna do, the max amount allowed out of the hundred and fifty thousand is for one entity in a three-year period is fifteen thousand. I put in for the max, but naturally, we would accept anything that we can get. Uh, that's my skill.
Motion?
My Reggie?
Second.
By Vern? Uh, excuse me, Sherm, any uh, further discussion? Can we get a roll call on this one before we go on?
Mister Hamel, Mister Bruno.
Yes, yes.
Mister Facto.
Yes.
Mister Randall.
Thanks, yeah.
Last one.
Twenty-three thirty-eight. Whereas the town of Skyler Falls is contin- continuing to make River Street Park a favorable place for the community to visit and enjoy heart-healthy activities. And where, as the town of Skyler Falls has recognized, recognized that a bus stop would allow residents in the town to have better access to surrounding communities and shopping in the area. And whereas the town of Skyler Falls has no scheduled bus stop at the, this time through cart. And whereas the town of Skyler Falls has increased fun activities to join in at the River Street venue. And whereas the town of Skyler Falls has recognized that this has become a full four-season use park used not only for walking but snowshoeing and cross-country skiing in the winter months. And whereas, we have an opportunity to apply for a twenty-twenty-three AARP grant for up to fifteen thousand dollars to increase the walking path area and build a bus stop station to achieve these two goals. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the town supervisors sign and execute the application to apply for this grant between the town of Skyler Falls and AARP to achieve funding for the two projects. Um, under discussion, I just wrote there that the grant will be applied for with the help of Malane Entertainment from the Clinton County Health Department who helped us last year to receive an eight thousand dollar grant from Complete Streets. Uh, again, she, that's my type, or should be a shoe, has already jumped in and on this project and has been a great help so far to prepare for the grant, so. She does a great job, she's very motivated. She will be as much as I in this thing, if not more. And again, we're just applying for it, if we don't get it, then either one of these two projects won't work for us. But you won't know unless you apply. And she's willing to do all the work to have it done. So, okay, I'll make the motion anyways.
I'll second.
So, seconded by Sherm. Any further discussion? If you look, I've uh, I've put in there the estimates. Um, not only for the walking path, the, the additional walking path down there and for the bus stop. I guess now roll call?
Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. That would be the end of the work. All right, and that brings us to claims. All right, uh, the claim, the audit only are uh, two zero two three zero zero one seven six through two zero two three zero zero one eight seven. Uh, regular claims, two zero two three zero zero two zero six through two zero two three zero zero three one three. And payroll claims, two zero two three zero zero one four five through two zero two three zero zero one seven five. And also two zero two three zero zero one eight eight through two zero two three zero zero two zero five. Uh, general fund, hundred and four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and twenty-nine cents. Highway, forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-four cents. Audit only, two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Woods Mills Water, fifty-four thousand, forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Morrisonville Water, sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars and thirty cents. Macy Lane Water, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and seventy-five cents. So, can I get a motion to pay the claim?
Motion.
By Vern? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, I'd like to abstain from voucher number.
Oh, cause of your New York City?
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
Twenty-twenty-three dash zero zero two nine zero.
Twenty twenty-three dash.
Zero zero two nine zero.
Which is your New York City one, right? Does payable to it?
Yes.
What you vote to pay it though? All right. You got that one? So, with that exception, um, here.
Uh, Mister Hamel?
Yes.
Mister Bruno?
Yes.
Mister Facto?
Yes.
Mister Randall?
Yes. All right, that brings us to uh, public forum, any dressees?
I just wanted to say thank you for having it put on the fire department, whoever arranged to have the town council meetings put on the fire department sign. Uh, that is how I knew there was a town council meeting tonight because I've looked through the files on the website, real hard to find information.
Oh, okay.
Um, so just, just acknowledging that, that was fantastic.
All right, yeah, the other commissioner's okay to have that done over there, so.
Are they gonna do that?
For me?
Yeah, I, I gave them a list of the whole, the whole, the rest of this year.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
I've seen that today myself.
Well, thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that up, that's, that's good.
Got a whole box full of notes still.
Yeah, no, I seen her writing, she must take shorthand too because there is no way I can write that down.
I'm a teacher.
Yes, sir.
Two questions.
Uh-huh.
One, the, it's been two months now that the engineering study went to the next level and they've been discussing changes back and forth.
Yep.
They anticipate when?
It really.
It's been additional two months since they were set up and.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I can't speak for like Ryan Davies or Jack and Ozer, those guys down there because as they keep on going through the review, it's a back and forth on the engineering plans and when they're done, they'll stamp, you know, that, that's, that will be the final.
See if they have a general timeframe, so maybe this year, we might actually get something done.
Well, I, I'm planning on it to be done or started sometime early this, this spring.
Cause after this part, they gotta put it out for the bid.
We have to put it out for bid materials, yep. Yep.
And last month I asked you to find out why the water was off, never got an answer back.
You're right, and I did check with Val and I forgot to call her back when I, and she's usually good at getting back to me, but uh.
Cause it wasn't just Macy Lane, it was a huge area over there that had no water for over an hour.
What were they doing? I did check into that, I don't remember.
I thought they said there was a break somewhere. They had to shut it off.
Well, when you called the town, they said that was on Macy Lane, which was bull because there was nothing on Macy Lane.
Yeah.
And I drove, and I drove where it starts up on our settlement road and around, nothing was around anywhere in there, everything, all, over, over an hour on a Sunday.
Did they shut everything down?
Didn't tell you anything, they were useless.
I'll call down tomorrow, it's written down, I'll call her and let you know.
I apologize, didn't get back to you.
Right?
Well, at least a month ago, yeah, cause it was last month I brought it up, it was on a Sunday afternoon, it went off.
They do have a break over there, but I don't remember, I don't think that was it.
They told us, I don't remember.
They did check into it. Apologize. Anybody out?
I have questions about the webpage, uh, I spent many hours on uh, North Shore Solution page and the C, CSTI page. Now, North Shore Solution has over a hundred municipalities, there's twenty of them listed on the page that you can click on and they invite you if you wanna see more of them, but every single one of them that I clicked on looks ten times better than our webpage. Every single link works, everything works and I was told that with North Shore you could have a webpage up and running and completely ready within one month. It looks like we're losing our uh, our uh, internet cyber security company because they were unable to vet the current webmaster. I was able to go online on the state site and look up the license for um, North Shore Solution and CSTI. They both come up on the uh, state website as licensed businesses. I asked you two months ago if you verified uh, the licensing of the present webmaster. Both companies are also A-plus on Better Business Bureau, um, as far as CSTI goes and uh, North Shore Solution goes. So it looks like you have a solution in front of you that you can have a fully working webpage within a month with no problem. And it's been over a year and three months now, just that I've been keeping track, that we don't have a fully functional.
Well, it's been, been a year, but okay.
Okay, uh.
The contract goes out for a while.
My question is, were you able to verify that there's an actual company because I believe one of the things you said was you wanted to be able to hold the company responsible if something goes wrong or if the town is held liable for something because I also spent many hours on the state webpage reading about town laws and it actually says on the uh, state web uh, page that every town should be able to take electronic foil requests by now, which we, I did put in an electronic foil request and I got that back, thank you. Um, but also, one of the places where public records should be stored is securely on a webpage. So that's one of the weekends of uh, you know, government that those records should be stored somewhere that are publicly accessible, ones that, you know, should be, and one of those ways of doing it is on the webpage. Now, our webpage is still not ADA compliant, there's websites where you can punch in our website and it'll give you a checklist of what's right and what's wrong with it. Still not Wega compliant, this is grown, brought up at least six months ago about that. These are issues that you could solve immediately by hiring, you know, one of the two companies that was recommended by the, the cybersecurity team. And also the cybersecurity uh, company, it looks like they might be quitting because they don't wanna be associated with the liability of working with um, a company that is unable to be vetted, is that the case?
Um, I would just say they had irreconcilable differences.
So, an A-plus rated company by Better, Better Business Bureau versus somebody who may or may not have a license or accreditation or and has had a year to make the webpage work and then you're siding with.
I'm not siding with anybody.
Okay, and you've also said that uh, we don't want to make the decision unilaterally, you want the board to do that. Are you encouraging the other board members to do their own research, to look at these other companies and look at the other solutions? And get information?
I did, I did give them all the documents for the other two sites.
So you're encouraging them to look at the other solutions and get their own information?
I did. Yep, they had all that.
So then maybe Mister Gazlo can answer some of those questions, do you have a number of employees?
Uh, can I make a?
You can't do that, you can't have public.
I'm sorry, and, and you've had your five minutes.
Yeah, no, no.
I, I would like to.
Mister Randall had said at the end that he might answer, so that's the reason I asked, okay.
Mister Randall understands and I understand your, 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 your issues here. But I'm not gonna sit here all night, if you wanna come, I'll even meet with you personally, but I'm not sitting here all night, Donna doesn't feel well. I, I don't, I don't feel as fair to everyone else. I would be with you personally.
They could be short answers, are you licensed, do you have a number of employees, how many and?
Yeah.
You know.
I don't, I don't think it's fair to put him on this spot in a public forum to do that, I think that's answers that you could probably get from him if you're inquiring that from him with an email or a phone call.
Well, I'm asking the board, if they did, cause I brought the question up to the board, have you looked into the licensing or accreditation or um, what clients have been serviced by them, like there's dozens of uh, clients testimonials on both of the webpages for North Shore Solution and on CSTI that have dozens and dozens of satisfied clients and client testimonial have. You looked into any of those?
No, and like I said, I'm, when we talked about this, I don't know if you were in here then, I'm gonna bring back three quotes again. One of them will be hot, for ourselves, and two others. And we're gonna look at them, see what one that this boy wants to go forward with, cause the contract is over as of, I think it's March third was actually the day we signed it, um, if I remember right. So he's, he's been willing to stay on without a contract in the interim until the board makes that decision. And that's why I said the next work session, I will be bringing in those three quotes, we'll work through it. Have everybody decide what they wanna do so that we can come to, it's not fair to him or anybody else to keep anybody strung along or figure out what, what they're gonna do. So, by the next uh, again, I have to be done by resolution, so by the next meeting, we can hire somebody for the right, the remainder of the twenty-twenty-three calendar.
Cause I keep hearing the next meeting, the next meeting, but since it is at the end of the contract, it might actually be the next meeting, so. And I've suggested to have both parties on concurrently to help the transition and stuff like that, I'm not opposed to that, but I'm saying that uh, everybody's frowning at me like they don't understand that, like I wouldn't say that there's, you know, there could be a reason to keep Pat on to help the transition over to North Shore
Oh.
um, solution, so. I'm not opposed to that.
That's what this board decides, I don't know who will be awarded the contract. Like I said, I will bring that information in, I'll have three quotes and this board can do their homework and make hopefully the best decisions for the town.
All right, then my final comment would be, I hope that uh, part of the review process is not who puts in the lowest number, but who puts in the lowest number that actually has webpages verifiable that they can do the job that needs to be done. I appreciate you guys.
Yeah, no problem.
Motion.
Yeah, over.
Anybody else?
Meetings, next meeting. All right. Next meeting, regular meeting will be three twenty-eight twenty-three, that's a Tuesday at six P M. Uh, work sessions, if needed, will be on three six of twenty-three and three twenty of twenty-three, again, if needed. Um, get a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Reggie can get out on that one.
Motion to adjourn, who was it?
Yeah, I'm saying that.
And we all agree.